The hour of 6:30 having come and gone and all Foxes present, nonwithstanding, we will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, March 19, 2024, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
President Curry? President Curry is present. Alder Duncan? Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers? Alder Evers is present. Vice President Figaro Cole? Vice President Figaro Cole is present. Alder Govindarajan? Alder Govindarajan is present. Alder Ughair? Alder Ughair is present. Alder Harrington McKinney?
I am present.
Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Alder Knox is excused. Alder Latimer Burris? Alder Latimer Burris is present. Alder Madison? Alder Madison is present. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford is present. Alder Mayanzi? Alder Mayanzi is present. Alder Rumel? Alder Rumel is present. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere? Alder Revere is present. Alder Vitavir? Alder Vitavir is present. Alder Weheli? Alder Weheli is present. Alder Bennett will be late. Alder Conklin? Alder Conklin is present. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. As usual, I'll remind us all that we're here to do the business of the people of Madison and ask that we do so with respect and kindness for each other and that we refrain collectively, whether staff, council members, or folks from the public, from using profanities in this space. Our first item is an Honoring Resolution. It's Legisstar 82490 honoring and celebrating the 50 years of service of Just Dane and recognizing their enormous and invaluable contributions to our community. And to read this resolution, I will turn to Alder Weheli.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. Whereas Just Dane, which was founded in 1971, incorporated in 1973, and received its nonprofit status in 1974, is celebrating 50 years of service and working for justice, inclusion, and equity in our community. And whereas, Just Dane has particularly focused on the areas of racism, poverty, education, access, fair, and affordable housing, and criminal justice reform. And whereas, Just Dane, originally known as Madison Area Urban Ministry, was created by a group of community members who were concerned about social justice issues. And whereas, as Just Dane engaged more and more members of the community, they saw their mission and impact expand throughout Dane County. And whereas, from the beginning, Just Dane has served as incubator for new ideas and projects, bringing solutions to problems facing our community and individuals who have been traditionally and intentionally marginalized and undervalued. And whereas, since their inception, Just Dane has successfully incubated 20 initiatives that became separate nonprofits, which includes Central Hispano, the Allied Wellness Center, Wisconsin Faith Voices for Justice, Family Enhancement, now part as Rice Family Service, Traditional Housing, opened the first main shelter at Grace Episcopal Church in 1985, and later merged to become part of Porchlight, the Interfaith Coalition of Workers' Justice, now Worker Justice Wisconsin, and the East Madison Community Health Center. And whereas, Just Dane continues to serve as a fiscal agent and incubator for a variety of local initiatives, meeting the needs of individuals or our communities, including the Allied Dunn Marsh Neighborhood Association, Allied Partners, Mom on Mission, Plead Shameless, and the Madison Performance Collective. And...
Whereas, in the mid-1990s, Just Dane began to focus on the criminal justice system via reentry support for individuals returning to the community from prison, as they realized that was where many of the systemic and institutional injustices they had been focused on converged. And whereas, Just Dane worked to educate themselves about the challenges faced by those involved in the criminal justice system, and recognized that being in daily proximity with individuals and families impacted by the criminal justice system made them better and more informed advocates. And whereas, Just Dane provides reentry support for individuals returning home after incarceration through an array of initiatives, including Circles of Support, The Journey Home, and Collaboration with the United Way, the Phoenix Initiative Peer Support Group, Reentry Peer Support, and Case Management. And whereas, Just Dane's Journey Home and Circles of Support reentry initiatives have helped strengthen our community through a significant reduction to the return-to-prison rate among program participants since 2006. And whereas, Just Dane launched the Vocational Training Program, Just Bakery, in 2013 for individuals who face chronic barriers to employment, including conviction history, mental health, and/or substance use challenges, lack of education, and homelessness. And whereas, Just Bakery offers skill-building, nationally-recognized training certificates, college credit, and acceptance into Madison College, and employment placement and retention support, as well as other supports and resources to help students succeed. And whereas, Just Dane addresses the impact of parental incarceration through their Just Connections Youth Initiative, Mentoring Connections, Reading Connections, and Family Connections. And...
As these programs, Just Dane shows that they understand that no parent serves their sentence alone, and that it is vitally important to keep families connected in a positive way whenever possible. And whereas, Just Dane understands the unique challenges faced by these youth, and the benefits of the dedicated and trained mentors from the community with whom to establish a lasting relationship. And whereas, in 2019, Just Dane responded to the need in our community and opened Healing House, the first medical recuperative shelter in the United States specifically for families that are unhoused and have a member being discharged from the hospital. And whereas, in the four years since opening, Healing House has provided 24/7 recuperative medical respite for 116 families and 307 individuals, with members in need of medical recuperative shelter for issues, including high-risk pregnancy, new moms and their babies, including being discharged from NICU, terminally ill children, surgeries, broken bones, and other illnesses. And whereas, Healing House is now consulting with shelters in other parts of the United States to assist them in creating recuperative shelters for families. And whereas, Just Dane has been a leading voice for 50 years in local advocacy, focused on compassionate justice and equity. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the Madison Common Council honor and celebrate the 50 years of service of Just Dane, and recognize their enormous and invaluable contribution to our community.
Thank you, Alders. We'll take that as moved by Alder Weheli and seconded by Alder Curry. And with us tonight to accept the Honoring Resolution is Lynda Ketchum. Now, a round of applause would be appropriate.
Thank you so much. You would think after that resolution there wouldn't have anything else to say, but a lot of you know me and know I'm going to say some things anyway. On behalf of the staff and board of Just Dane, I do want to thank the council and the mayor for your recognition of Just Dane's contributions to our city. We also thank you on behalf of the thousands of individuals who have, over the past 50 years, found support, mentoring, healing, shelter, compassion, and resources through Just Dane. This Honoring Resolution is an acknowledgement that we are one community, that every resident of our city is important, that what each of us does in community, on behalf of community, makes a difference to the overall health and well-being of everyone in our city. As we celebrate our 50th anniversary, we give thanks for Chuck Pfeiffer's creative, compassionate leadership as our first director, building a strong foundation for our work. We thank our second director, Mary Kay Baum, for her vision and focus on challenging the status quo of the criminal legal system. I'm joined this evening by some of our former and current Just Dane staff and volunteers who have helped to make our work possible. Jackie Austin, who's got her camera up there. Watch out. Jackie helped inform our advocacy for 22 years. She also implemented and coordinated our reentry simulations, along with doing about 40 other duties as assigned. Alder McKinney, along with the Honorable Everett Mitchell, who helped develop and implement our vision for wraparound holistic supports for criminal legal system-impacted individuals. And as you heard in the resolution, the success rate of those initiatives resulted in about a 10%, on average, 10% two-year return-to-prison rate for our participants compared to a 60% to 67% return-to-prison rate for people in the DOC system in general. Carmella Glenn, who as the Just Bakery Coordinator oversaw the development and build-out of our commercial training kitchen, negotiated with Madison College, who initially wasn't so keen on our program, for an articulation agreement to get our students earning college credit and acceptance into that program. Demelle Glenn and James Morgan, our very first two certified peer support specialists under our new city contract in 2018, who helped build a strong reentry peer support program. Alder Weheli, our first-ever development director, who helped secure our single-largest gift ever that allowed us to start building on Healing House, and also oversaw the capital campaign for that construction and that project. And I'll note, we actually now, it's 119 families and 327 individuals who have been through the doors. Sharon Bowie, who is our associate director, I believe, is going to speak a little later, virtually, as will our development director, Kathy Eckenrod, who's with us. Kathy's currently spending pretty much every waking hour on 50th anniversary events, and I think you'll hear a little more from her about that. Our board co-chair, Julie Horst, is here with us this evening. I believe Ryan Estrella, our other co-chair, is joining virtually. It's also fitting, too, that we remember colleagues who have recently passed away, people who dedicated their lives to helping others heal, to building a healthier, more peaceful, and equitable community. Chuck Pfeiffer, James Hawke, Masita Rucker Thomas, Joshua Clower, Sister Ruth Puchigian, Sister Esther Heffernan, Fred Reams, Mary Bean, Sheila Spear, Lynda Newman, Tom Frankie, and many others over 50 years. Over the past 50 years, thousands of individuals have been assisted by the nonprofits incubated and spun off by Just Dane. Thousands more have walked through our doors. They've honored us by sharing their stories, their pain, their vision for something better, for healing. They've invited us to be part of their journey. We honor them, and we hold their trust and their stories as sacred. This work, our work, for justice and equity, for healing, is a community effort, a partnership in which each of us brings our gifts, our skills, our commitment to justice, to the table. And when we're really doing it right, we, all of us, are continuously expanding the table and adding more chairs, continually learning when to talk and when to shut up and just listen, continuously learning when to lead and when to follow, continuously learning and expanding our understanding of one another's lived experiences. We're grateful for our collaborators, for new partnerships and friends, my new friends, Tunji Lassie and Seryan Sise, with the African Center for Community Development. 50 years is a significant milestone for an organization that started in a church basement by a group of people who weren't sure they could pay the director they had just hired. But they were led on by faith, and our work has always been about faith, believing in something better despite evidence to the contrary, believing that we can work together to find solutions to difficult problems, believing that we can work together to dismantle systems of oppression. And that doesn't change, and it won't change, as we enter our 50th year. Over the next year, you'll hear about new partnerships and collaborations, expanded visions, exciting initiatives that imagine new ways of being in community. We're excited about the next 50 years, and we're eager to continue working with all of you to create a community in which everyone has a real opportunity to succeed, and to flourish, and to thrive. So on behalf of all of us at Just Dane, thank you for your recognition. You honor us. Thank you for your partnership over these 50 years and your leadership in our community.
Lynda, don't go away. Don't go away. The alder is going to present you with the Honoring Resolution, and I believe a few people might want to take some pictures. All right, we do have a few other folks wishing to speak, so we'll go next to Sharon Bowie of District 14, representing Just Dane. Do we have Sharon?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Thank you so much, Mayor. First of all, it's going to be extraordinarily difficult to follow Lynda after that very comprehensive and very elucidated speech. Lynda, I just want you to know that none of this would be possible, as we mentioned, former directors, without your leadership. You have been a beacon of hope for many of us at Just Dane, and we want to make sure that we acknowledge you and give you the credit that you deserve. And I won't belabor many of the points that have been discussed here this evening. Instead, I wanted to talk about one aspect of Just Dane that I don't believe gets enough credit, if you will, or enough acknowledgement, and that is the ability of Just Dane, fostered by Lynda Ketchum, to recognize the leadership capability of many of us who have been returned from prison. All too often, individuals, they reenter society, and we believe that all they need is just an opportunity to get a job, to get a car, to maybe get an apartment, and everything is good. But many of those individuals have distinct leadership abilities that can be cultivated, that can be placed in our community to provide guidance to the next generation of individuals. And that's what Just Dane truly, truly excels at. You see, we never know who's living next to us in many circumstances. That person who we walk down the street and pass on the corner may be legally system-impacted. That person who we purchase our café latte from may be legally system-impacted. These individuals, those individuals, my individuals, we have talent, we have ability, and that is what Just Dane leads our community in recognizing, cultivating, and sending out into our community to ensure that those who follow behind us have an opportunity to live their best life, not just survive in this life. So as the Associate Director of Just Dane, I would like you to know, just like that one commercial says, I'm not just the Associate Director, I'm a client as well. And Lynda recognized my ability, the Board of Directors recognized my ability, and because of that, I occupy my position. And I fully intend to continue the efforts that Just Dane has begun, to pluck out those individuals and give them the opportunity to excel, to lead, and to demonstrate a degree of responsibility. I thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of the great, great organization, Just Dane.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Sandy Park of District 10, representing the Allied Dunn's Marsh Neighborhood Association. I believe Sandy is online. There you go. So...
Is this working?
You need to turn off the sound on whatever device you're watching the meeting on so that we don't get the echo.
Hi.
There we go.
Oh, thank you. I am so sorry. Okay. I am treasurer of the Allied Dunn's Marsh Neighborhood Association, and Just Dane is our fiscal agent, and I just want to say, they make everything run smoothly, no matter what the issue. I can't believe it, because these things that look confusing, they just fix them. But I'm also here to speak for the longtime neighborhood activist, Ms. Alice Howard, because she can't be with us tonight, so I'm quoting her. "We worked alongside Madison Urban Ministry and then Just Dane for over 20 years as our fiscal agent and much, much more. It always got better each year. Together, we changed Allied Drive from being the worst neighborhood in the city to being a flourishing neighborhood. Without the help of Just Dane, there would not be an Allied Dunn's Marsh Neighborhood Association, and Allied Drive would be in a much poorer place. I'm sorry I can't be with you tonight, because I will always be so grateful for Lynda and Just Dane." And those of you who know Ms. Alice know that she had a whole lot more to say, and I cut her off.
Thank you so much, Sandy, and thank you, Ms. Alice. Our next registrant is Kathy Eckenrod of Cross Plains, representing Just Dane.
Hi, I'm Kathy Eckenrod, Development Director at Just Dane. I just wanted to take a few minutes and thank you for acknowledging the tremendous impact that Just Dane has made over the last 50 years. In my role, I get the privilege of representing in the community my colleagues who do this tremendous, hard work, day in and day out, and I see the changes that are made in the lives of the people that we serve. And I want to thank the community for coming alongside us in generosity and supporting the work that we do, our programs like Healing House, and Just Bakery, and our Mentoring Connections, and Journey Home. It's the community coming together and owning the mission of Just Dane that actually makes our work possible, and I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Those are our registrants on this item. We'll turn now to Alders. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Lynda, and all your colleagues, for all your hard work, and congratulations on 50 years. I'm so excited for your celebration next month. I'm particularly excited that you secured the presence of Father Greg Boyle, one of my favorite speakers and authors, and I'm going to be there for sure. You know that we're going through a challenging time with the budget, and I can assure you that many on this body are determined not to see our budget balance on the backs of our nonprofits, nonprofits like Just Dane, who are doing vitally important and profound essential work in our community. But I'm asking that you hold us accountable to that, and that you remind the community that as we seek solutions to our budget challenges, we make sure that your important work continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. Echoing my colleague here, so I'm not going to add to that, and I don't know if this is proper to say, but that celebration is happening on April 11th. It's all over the place. Go to Just Dane page so you can register, and we can participate and be part of these accomplishments. And a personal note, I know Lynda, technically, since I started this role as an alder, everyone around me seems to know who Lynda was, and I think that from the first moment that we met... met, we immediately clicked, and I had learned so much from you and the amazing job that you do for the community and the programming. Like, I just, I had learned so much, and I'm so grateful to have you and to have Just Dane as an organization. If you haven't had the chance to taste all the goodies that they make over the years, please do so. I have used them in multiple events, and there's always bragging to go around. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wiheli?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations, Just Dane and all the staff, and it's nice to see my family again. So I'm really excited to see you guys. So working at Just Dane as a development director really taught me a lot. I learned what really equity means and what justice means. Through proximity, in connecting with those individuals, learning their stories, learning their barriers, I had to learn how to be more empathetic and helping them and, in a holistic way, wrap around services that you all have. It was really profound to see that the residivism for Just Dane is just less than 10% compared to the statewide, which is over 67%. So I see evidence-based organization that really helps in the community. So I'm really excited for the 50th anniversary, and thanks to all the partners that you have, Lynda, and your leadership, and nice seeing you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What a grand entrance I had. I owe Just Dane, Madison Area Urban Ministry, so much in my life. During a very difficult time at the loss of my son, I was working at Madison Area Urban Ministry, and they embraced me and held me when I couldn't hold myself. But more importantly, I am so rewarded when I'm in the community and someone taps me on the shoulder and they say, "Thank you for what Madison Urban Ministry did." They say, "Thank you for seeing me." It is amazing, and I've always said that Madison Area Urban Ministry was the best-kept secret in Dane County, and I'm so pleased that that secret now is a secret no more, that people know that Madison Area Urban Ministry, Just Dane, changes the lives of so many people and create that space. I coordinated the Circles of Support, and most of the volunteers on the Circle of Support didn't look like the men and women that they worked with. They looked more like Lynda, and the men and women who were in that circle looked more like me. And in one of the trainings, I would say to those white volunteers is that you have to know why you're doing this. It's not based upon whether they are successful or whether they fail, whether they let you down, you just have to show up. And so many of the Circle of Supports showed up. You have a tremendous staff then, you have a tremendous staff now that are committed, and I am just so pleased that part of my life was at Madison Area Urban Ministry. And who I am today and my commitment to the community and my love for people really was nurtured at Madison Area Urban Ministry, and so for that, I'm eternally grateful, and I acknowledge and recognize you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. President Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't going to be laborious, but I just wanted to chime in and say congratulations on 50 years, and also just share an appreciation of what Sharon so beautifully, eloquently stated of Lynda's leadership, but specifically in being a caveat for, or a conduit as an organization with the reputation and advocacy that you have, but also recognizing the skills and leadership in folks that are bypassed by our traditional HR methods, and just appreciating specifically the work that you do on behalf of residents reentering from incarceration, and encourage folks, if you have not yet, to participate in their returning from incarceration simulation, because it is eye-opening, and also it really is a conduit to what the participants there serving experience. And so thank you for all of your leadership and dedication, all of you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rummel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to chime in too and congratulate you. I've known of your organization since Mary Kay Baum, and she's always been someone I look up to as a mentor and as a leader. But I have to say that, you know, you could just have done the same thing over and over for years and been really, do really important work, but you kept stepping up. Like, I remember when, because I served with Lynda on a committee, on the Homeless Issues Committee, about when the Healing House idea came about, and it was like, of course we need this. I mean, it was something you identified through your work that was needed, and then you went and did it. And I know that took a couple of years and a lot of effort, but something like that is just like, it's not like expected from nonprofits, just to go, okay, now we're going to do this. So I, and also I just want to say, for the record, I just had a Just Bakery brownie the other day, and it was really delicious. Thank you. And that's to another program where people can now get skills and go out, you know, food service is a big part of our economy, so kudos to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak, so let me just add my congratulations as well. It is a feat for any organization to last 50 years, much less an organization that does the hard work that Just Dane does. To be able to sustain the staff, the fundraising, the volunteers, is a remarkable thing in and of itself. To then, on top of that, be able to achieve what you all have achieved is incredible. And so congratulations, not just on 50 years, but on the work that you do every day that makes our community a better place. Is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor of the honoring resolution? Seeing no objection, that vote is recorded, and we will move on. Are there any disclosures or recusals from members of the body on tonight's agenda? Alder Vitiver?
Item 89, I'm a employee of the Wisconsin Department of Health Services.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to preface that this is probably the longest consent agenda I have read, so please bear with me, and it's the last one. All right. A consent agenda is moved with recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two items which alders have separated for discussion, debate purposes. I will be reading supermajority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. Agenda items that are supermajority, meaning more than 11 votes are needed, are Agenda Item Number 11, Legislative File Number 82498, reporter of the mayor submitting a resident committee appointment to the downtown coordinating committee, 14 votes are required. Agenda Item Number 60, Legislative File Number 82247, amending the public health budget to accept funds from the National Center for Fatality Review and Prevention for capacity building in Dane County, 15 votes are required. Agenda Item Number 82, Legislative File Number 82434, amending the Madison General Ordinance related to towing charge forfeiture to correct inconsistencies and improper references in the MGO constituting a 2024 City Attorney Revisors Ordinance, 14 votes required. Agenda Item Number 83, Legislative File Number 81561, approving a certified survey map of property owned by Fountain of Life Ministries located in District 14, 14 votes required. Agenda Item Number 84, Legislative File Number 81938, approving a certified survey map of property owned by Dillon Investments in District 15, 14 votes required. Agenda Item Number 85, Legislative File Number 81939, approving a certified survey map of property owned by University Research Park in District 19, 14 votes required. Agenda Item Number 86, Legislative File Number 81940, approving a certified survey map of property owned by University Research Park, also in District 19, different address, 14 votes required. Agenda Item Number 87, Legislative File Number 82497, reapproving a certified survey map of property owned by Tenney Place Developments in District 12, 14 votes required. Agenda Item Number 88, Legislative File Number 82119, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Regenerative Technologies to provide software and support services to implement the Building Energy Savings Program, and when awarded, amending the 2024 Mayor's Office Sustainability Improvements capital budget to accept funding from the U.S. Energy Efficient and Conservation Black Grant Program, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the said agreement, 15 votes required. Agenda Item Number 89, Legislative File Number 82155, amending the 2024 Police Department Operating Budget and authorizing mayor and chief of police to sign a contract for a grant award by the Wisconsin Department of Health Services opioid abatement efforts in the amount of, in the amount of a lot of money for expanding the pathways to Recovery Madison and Dane County's Madison Area Addiction Resource Initiative and the Laxone Press Programs, 15 votes required. Agenda Item Number 91, Legislative File Number 82225, amending the 2024 adopted operating budget for the City of Madison Fire Department to accept money from the University School of Medicine and Public Health for the City of Madison Firefighter EMT Development Program, 15 votes required. Agenda Item Number 94, Legislative File Number 82263, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation and authorizing contracts with that development, with the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation and the 121 East Wilson Investors for the use of funds and amending the 2024 operating budget for the Economic Development Division Office of Business Resource, 15 votes required. Agenda Item Number 96, Legislative File Number 82274, authorizing the transfer of funds from the city-owned bank account managed by Brehan Management to the city into the General Land Acquisition Fund for the payment of repairs, maintenance, and replacement costs for a building owned by the city at 910 and 1917 Lake Point Drive, and amending the EDD's capital budget accordingly, 15 votes required. Agenda Item Number 97, Legislative File Number 82283, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a purchase-of-sale agreement between the city and V.H. Acquisitions for the city's acquisition of multiple parcels of land near intersections of Marty, Midtown, and Raymond Roads, and amending the adopted budget to reflect, 15 votes required. Agenda Item Number 101, Legislative File Number 82371, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement and authorizing a funding appropriation in the 2024 capital budget to fund a TIF loan to East Washington Apartments to construct approximately 192 units of affordable housing and approximately 139 parking stalls located at 808 Melvin Court in the tax incremental District 52, District 12, 15 votes required. Legislative, sorry, Agenda Item Number 103, Legislative File 81560, approving a certified survey map of property owned by 1908 Arlington Place, 14 votes are required. Agenda Item Number 104, Legislative File Number 81564, approving a certified survey map of property owned at 1010252 Mineral Point Road, 14 votes required. Agenda Item Number 105, Legislative File Number 81941, approving a certified survey map of property owned at 426 Yellowstone Drive and releasing city enforcement of a plated restriction, 14 votes required. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda Number 80, Legislative File Number 75926, repealing sections of the Madison General Ordinance to combine the City Homeless Issues Committee, Landlord-Tenant Issues Committee, and Housing Strategy Committee. Report of the Common Council Executive Committee is the recommended action from CCEC is to place on file without prejudice. Agenda Item Number 81, Legislative File Number 81911, amending a section of the Madison Ordinance related to composition of the Common Council Executive Committee to modify the appointment process to that committee. The recommended action from the CCEC is to place the item on file. Agenda Number 82, Legislative File Number 82434, amending a section of the ordinance related to towing charge forfeiture to correct inconsistencies in constituting a City Attorney Revisors Ordinance. The recommended action from CCEC is to adopt. Agenda Item Number 102, Legislative File Number 82381, 2023 Police Department Donation Report is requested to be withdrawn from the agenda. There's a note that the Finance Committee took up the file for consideration at its March 11th meeting, and the action was recorded incorrectly in Legistar. The action has been corrected, and the file is not being referred to the Common Council for action. Agenda items which are excluded by either request of alders or speakers registered by 6:30 on March 19th. Agenda Item Number 4, Legislative File Number 82175, appeal of the Madison Landmarks Commission granting a certificate of appropriateness for a land division at 1908 Arlington Place, speakers registered. Agenda Item Number 81, Legislative File Number 81911, amending a section of the ordinance to, related to composition and modifying the CCEC appointment process, speakers registered. Agenda Item Number 103, Legislative File Number 181560, approving a certified survey map of property owned at 1908 Arlington Place. Looks like I requested that for exclusion, but I don't recall doing it.
It's a companion to Item 4.
Okay. Taking those items together, thank you. Agenda Number 126, Legislative File Number 82492, authorizing the city to retain outside counsel on a non-competitive basis to provide legal representation of the Police and Fire Commission. Introduction for New Business Without Debate by Alder Verveer excluded for the purpose of adding an additional referral for the Finance Committee. And items introduced from the floor. Legislative File Number 82503, authorizing the city to execute an amendment to its purchase of service contract with Von Bressen and Roper as outside counsel to the state street campus facility redevelopment, introduced by myself to be before the Finance Committee of March 25th, to be heard by the Common Council at its April 16th meeting. Legislative File Number 82557, by title only, I'm assuming amending Madison Metro sections for their low or no emission grant applications to the Federal Transit Admin for hybrid electric buses, equipment, and charging infrastructure for those select routes, introduced by Alder Govendarajan to be before the Finance Committee of March 25th, followed by the Common Council meeting of April 16th. Legislative File Number 82560, authorizing the city's execution of a termination agreement of the existing Lakeview Library lease that was expired and executing a new lease agreement that would expire on December 31st, 2030, with four renewal options that are three years each in duration between the City of Madison and Sherman Plaza, introduced by Alder Latimer Burris to be before the introduced by Alder Latimer-Burrus to be before the Finance Committee of March 25th, Madison Public Library Board Meeting of April 4th, and Common Council Meeting of April 16th. Legislative File Number 82564, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement and authorizing an amendment to the capital budget to fund a loan to Vermillion Madison to construct units of market-rate housing and parking stalls in the TID 54 in District 12, introduced by Alder Latimer-Burrus to be before the Finance Committee of March 25th and the Common Council of April 16th. Legislative File Number 82567, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a purchase-of-service contract with Covino, Smith, and Simon for federal lobbying services for two years with the option of a two-year renewal, introduced by Mayor Rhodes Conway to be before the Finance Committee of March 25th and Common Council of April 16th. And finally, Legislative File Number 82573, repealing sections of the Madison, Madison General Ordinance to combine the duties of the Landlord and Tenant Issues, Housing Strategy Committees, and Housing Policy Committee, introduced by Vice President Figaro Cole to be before the Housing Strategy Committee of April 25th, Landlord and Tenant Issues Committee of March 21st, and returning to the Common Council for action on May 7th.
Thank you, President Curry. Are there any additional items that Alders would like to have separated from the consent agenda? Alder Rommel.
Thank you, Mayor. A Number 101 and Number 108. And I have a question about a 14-vote item, just for the city attorney. Are CSMs all across the board, 14-vote items, or? Number 103, it says it's a 14-vote item.
So, some CSMs, they're 14-vote items because they're being, the rules are being suspended to pass them at the same meeting they're due to, I believe, that's the rule. For the ones that are not approved administratively, that's my understanding.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. So just to, to double-check 101 and 108. Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional exclusions from the consent agenda at this time? Alder Harrington McKinney.
Item Number 64, 82280, just clarification questions.
Item Number 64, thank you, Alder. Any additional items for exclusion from tonight's consent agenda? Alder Latimer-Burrus.
So, I know that Alder Rommel just pulled 101.
Can you move your mic closer?
Sure. I know Alder Rommel just pulled 101, and I was looking here in my list. 103.
103 is excluded.
It's excluded already, okay. I just wanted to make sure, thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Any additional items for exclusion from tonight's consent agenda? Alder Harrington McKinney.
Question, Madam Mayor, Item Number 681952. Is that excluded because we have speakers?
Do you have an agenda number, Alder?
Six. Item 1952.
Item six, this is regarding ADUs?
Yes.
No, we do not have speakers on that item, Alder.
Okay, I like that excluded.
That item will be excluded at your request, Alder. Thank you. Any additional items for exclusion from tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, then let me go back over that. We have a number of items that are either 14 or 15 votes required. Items that require 14 votes are 11, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 104, and 105. I'm excluding the ones that have been pulled for discussion. Items that require 15 votes are 60, 88, 89, 91, 94, 96, 97. And then there's several that have been excluded as well. Items that have a recommendation different from what is printed on the agenda. Item 80, the recommendation is to place on file without prejudice. Item 81, sorry, will be separated. Item 82, the recommendation is to adopt. Item 102 will be withdrawn from the agenda. And then separated, excluded from the consent agenda tonight will be items 4, 6, 64, 81, 101, 103, and 108. And then, if there is no objection, I'd like to propose that we add the referral on Item 126 to Finance Committee on 3/25. Without pulling that item, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that item will be referred to Finance Committee on 3/25 and will not be excluded tonight. So again, the exclusions are 4, 6, 64, 81, 101, and 108. And then we have a number of introductions from the floor. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my understanding that Item 6 and Item 8 on the agenda, Item 6 about accessory dwelling units, and Item 8 on drive-through windows was referred at Plan Commission, and both of them, but those referrals aren't, aren't referenced somehow or another in our current agenda.
Alder, you're correct, both those items, the recommendation is to re-refer to Plan Commission.
I believe, if I may add, Item 6 was, on an interim basis, being referred to the Housing Strategy Committee.
Requested for separation. Alder, I don't see that reflected in the agenda, but that doesn't mean that it's not going to happen. Staff is saying that it will be referred to the Housing Strategy Committee as well.
Then back to Plan Commission on April 8th, from my understanding.
Yep. Yep, that's correct.
Okay, well, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel.
Thank you, Mayor. On the last go-around, I didn't hear you call out 103.
Yes, 103 is excluded.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for checking, Alder. Additional questions? Alder Curry.
Madam Mayor, if you could read the exclusion list again.
Absolutely. Items 4, 6, 64, 81, 101, 103, and 108 will be excluded. One more time, 4, 6, 64, 81, 101, 103, and 108. Alder Govindarajan?
My bad, sorry.
Okay. Alder Latimer-Burrus.
Sure, I just had a point of information, just wanted to understand this. For Legislative File, just a second. It's Number 80, Legislative File 75926, regarding the merging of all the committees, landlord, homeless, issue, et cetera. Will that, Legislative File 75926, will that go along? Will that be sent over with Legislative File Number 82573, the last one, which it seems like it's, again, addressing the same issue? Will those, what's happened there, will it be passed along?
Alder, the recommendation on Item 80 is to place on file without prejudice. So if the consent agenda passes tonight, that item will be placed on file without prejudice. And my understanding is that the new item that's on for introduction is intended to replace it.
Okay, so the file won't transfer over?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Alder. All right, let's try for it. President Curry, a motion, please, on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by President Curry and seconded by Alder Conklin, thank you. And seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, that vote is recorded. And we will go on to public comment. All right, on public comment, the first item we have public comment on is Agenda Item Number 4, an appeal of the Madison Landmarks Commission granting a certificate of appropriateness for a land division at 1908 Arlington Place. Our first registrant on this item is Monica Messina of District 5, to be followed by Jean Halferty, to be followed by Lester Pines. Do we have Monica? Please come forward.
Shall I begin?
Yes, please.
Okay. First, thank you for listening. My family has lived on Block 9 of University Heights for 23 years, but on the Kendall Avenue side. That's the downhill side of the Heights, and it's easy to see the difference from the uphill side at Arlington. In fact, this is how the National Historic Register described University Heights. Quote, "Construction on this hilltop neighborhood began in 1894. Large impressive homes were clustered just below the summit, while smaller houses were built in the north portion of the development," end quote. So it makes sense that the lots are larger up the hill on Arlington Place for those significantly larger homes. To me, that's important, an important element of the history of University Heights, that is, the evolution of the suburb, which is fully pertinent to the Ordinance 41.18 sub-4, terms, the terms, quote, "the general lot size pattern of the historic district," end quote. My contributions to the public comment have been images of historic maps. If you've not seen the maps, some of them are in the handouts. These maps show the history and relevance of 1908 Arlington Place. 1908 was the first house built on Block 9, and its replating serves as a precedent for the larger lots, both on Arlington and Princeton Avenue. This type of historical review didn't occur at the Landmarks Hearing. Ms. Bailey, Landmark staff, simply stated that the lots in University Heights are varied, and in her public comment for tonight, Ms. Bailey reiterates, quote, "University Heights does not have a single lot size throughout the district," end quote. But saying that there's not a single lot size throughout the district begs the question of how we are to understand and defend the general lot size pattern. Do we simply shrug and say, anything goes? No, we need criteria. In the Landmarks Hearing, one of the members asked, quote, "Do we have a chart of average sizes?" End quote. Ms. Bailey replied, quote, "No, we don't have a chart of averages in terms of width that meets zoning standards within 40 feet," end quote. So it appears the criteria is only to meet zoning codes for a build of a lot? There's also no mention that the square footage of this newest lot is the smallest of the entire block. I now wish to refer to the council's charge codified in 41.13, Public Interest in Preservation and Maintenance. Quote, "The Common Council finds that it is in the public interest to preserve and maintain landmarks, landmark sites, and improvements in historic districts, and to vigorously enforce this chapter," end quote. But no such vigorous enforcement of preservation occurred at the Landmarks Hearing where evaluation criteria were based on zoning and arbitrary, arbitrary, that is cherry-picking comparable lots on the wrong side of the block. We homeowners who've made the appeal of the Landmark Certificate of Appropriateness for the land division in 1908 are here to defend both a local and national historic resource, and we will hope, we hope you'll join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jean Halferty of District 5, to be followed by Lester Pines, to be followed by Roberta Gassman. Jean?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Terrific, thank you so much. Madison needs housing. I do not oppose infill or growth. Before the February meeting, my husband and I thought, oh, boy, this has to be the markings of a developer looking to make a quick buck on the backs of people struggling to find homes, which you see in booming cities. We were so relieved there was a commission and an ordinance to protect the few pieces of history the City of Madison has deemed worth saving. I imagine this is a brand-new frontier for the Landmark Commission. Sadly, at the end of the meeting, we were left very dismayed with the process. We listened to the meeting a few times after that. While I appreciated Dr. Bailey's responding to our appeal and her work, her response does not address our concerns. Furthermore, you must look to what was actually said in the meeting, not the memos, new points of view analyzing whether this meeting had serious flaws. In the memo to this council, Dr. Bailey says, quote, "While not specifically defined in the zoning ordinance, the city consistently uses adjacent to mean adjoining." In the meeting, when Alder Latimer-Burrus specifically asked if adjacent is defined in the applicable ordinance, Dr. Bailey's response was, yes, let me look it up. Dr. Bailey tried to locate a definition in an ordinance and eventually cited 28.144. That ordinance doesn't define adjacent and is not applicable. This property, if said required definition is not in an ordinance, there was no mention of a legal or a court definition. Where is it from, we asked? We were even more surprised when the map used at the meeting for comparables was the work submitted by the owner LLC, with the only difference being a city logo now appears on that document. Photos of comparables within 200 feet are required under the Requirements Checklist section in the original submission, and the box was checked, they were provided. None were shown during the meeting, even when asked for by Alder Latimer-Burrus. Linda Leonard's email to this council refers to a number of other additional inconsistencies. Dr. Bailey stressed the Land Commission reviews lots. Linda pointed out, instead, the Commission reviewed parcels. Linda also shows the purpose, the proposed new lot, excuse me, is not comparable in size to lots in University Heights, and especially on interior streets like Arlington Place. I struggled with how one could leave that meeting without feeling that the definition of adjacent was less about complying with the ordinance and more about fitting a predetermined outcome. Native powers are also quite upset when Attorney Lester Pines was interrupted by the chair while answering a question posed by Alder Latimer-Burrus. If not resolved, this issue will continue to come up over and over again. I respectfully request that you reverse the landmark decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Lester Pines of District 5, to be followed by Roberta Gassman, to be followed by Brian Reber. Lester?
Thank you, I appreciate this opportunity to address the council. I, along with Jean Halferty and Monica Messina, and with the assistance of Roberta Gassman, submitted a memorandum to the council, submitted another email in response to the report of the Plan Commission, the Landmarks Commission staff. And this afternoon, I, at the very last moment, after seeing the city attorney's opinion that was sent out about the meaning of the word adjacent, I replied to that. I hope that the members of the council have had an opportunity to, to review those memoranda, and I will be happy to answer any questions that were raised in, by your review of them. I want to make clear one thing. The reason that we are here opposing the Landmarks Commission, Landmarks Commission decision is because, as owners of property in a, in a historic district, we are under the control of the Landmarks Commission and its staff. We cannot do anything to the exteriors of our homes without getting permission. And I can tell you that the Landmarks Commission has been, and staff, have been very strict in their application of these requirements over the last 36 years that I have lived in University Heights. I want to address two things. One is this question of adjacency. Adjacent means nearby. Adjacent means neighborly. Adjacent can't mean adjoining, but it's supposed to mean adjoining, just as in the section quoted by the city attorney this afternoon. It should be modified to say immediately, because that's, that's how it was done in the Supreme Court case that I cited to you, the Wisconsin Supreme Court case, and that is how it is done in the statute, in the ordinance now. The reason that it has to be that is so that the Commission takes a look at the environment. And I can also tell you that you need to construe that statute in, along with the statute, which says the owners of property within 20% of the parcels where this certificate of appropriateness has been granted, 20% of those people have to appeal in order for the matter to come before you. But if the only properties at issue are the adjoining properties, why would 20% of people within 200 feet have to appeal? The answer is, those are the properties that are adjacent. And then to go on, I quoted to you from the 1983 application for University Heights to be on the National Register of Historic Locations. There is a general pattern of, there is a general pattern of lot sizes in University Heights. There is a general pattern of, there is a general pattern of lot sizes in University Heights, and the lot sizes get bigger.
Thank you, that's your time.
I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Roberta Gassman of District Five, to be followed by Brian Reber, to be followed by Linda Leonard. Roberta? Do we have Roberta? You should have a prompt to unmute yourself, Roberta.
I see it, I'm so sorry.
There you go.
Our neighbors have done extensive research on our appeal. I support their arguments, and I want to add three contextual points. One, this is not about NIMBY folks who are insensitive to the vulnerable, as some have asserted. This is not an attack on dedicated staff and citizen volunteers who make our commissions strong. This is about following the law, as sometimes errors occur, and following our legal appeals process to get it right, ensuring the essence of democracy. Our lives, my life, Lester's life, our lives have been committed to the vulnerable. I'm the granddaughter of immigrants who spoke no English, had no possessions, no formal education. I was the first in my family to go to college. Lester's father was an immigrant whose native language was Spanish. We grew up in tiny houses and worked throughout college to help support ourselves, committed to social justice. Lester pursued law and me, social work. We've helped our own low-wage family members overcome housing insecurity and eviction. We helped not only our family, but our community, supporting the Road Home, Urban League, YWCA, Goodman Center, and more, to insinuate that we don't support the vulnerable is not well-informed. I've worked across the aisle at all government levels on behalf of those in need. In President Obama's administration, Governor Dole's cabinet, for Governor Earl on women's issues, as a top aide for a mayor and a county exec. I've served on major, major nonprofit boards, Madison Community Foundation, Equal Opportunities Commission, United Way, Overture, Edgewood College, and I've won various honors. Lester's represented working people, nurses, nursing assistants, janitors, teachers, office workers. He's fought for voting, reproductive rights, LGBT, and civil rights, and he's been honored by the NAACP, Fair Wisconsin, and more, and he's won many professional honors. We believe public employees are dedicated and hardworking. We're offended by any who criticize them, and we appreciate the many volunteers who serve on city commissions. We know, however, that in fast-paced organizations, sometimes errors in decision-making happen. We're thankful that city ordinances provide an appeals process to ensure that when needed, citizen appeals can be brought to the council, given your oversight role. We thank you, and we hope that you will please approve our well-researched and put-together appeal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Brian Reber of District Five, to be followed by Linda Leonard. Do we have Brian?
My name is Brian Reber, and I own and reside at 1908 Arlington Place. I applied to add a lot line to the property, splitting the side yard from the existing home to create an additional buildable lot. Both proposed lots meet the Landmarks Commission's standards for land divisions, zoning requirements for TRC-2, and the city's subdivision ordinance. Some neighbors have taken issue with the land division and wish for it to not occur. I understand they are connected to University Heights and care about the neighborhood. I share their appreciation for the heritage of University Heights, and I see this as an opportunity to give another family the chance to join our neighborhood, as well as to create another needed unit of housing near downtown Madison. Thank you for your consideration of this issue.
Thank you. Our last registrant wishing to speak is Linda Leonard of District Six.
This matter should be referred back to landmarks for two reasons. One, to make a decision based on lot sizes. Two, to include the properties to the south in the analysis, not just those to the north. The ordinance addressing land divisions requires landmarks to determine whether a proposed lot is incompatible with adjacent lot sizes, or whether a proposed lot fails to maintain the general lot pattern size of the historic district. Staff explained the difference to Landmarks Commission at the public hearing as a parcel is a boundary for tax purposes. Lots are legal descriptions that have to do with the way an area is planted. Yet, what landmarks actually discussed were the parcels, not the lots. An analysis of parcel sizes was presented to landmarks, as well as a map of parcels in the historic district. There was not a comparable analysis for lot sizes. Some of the past landmarks decisions on lot divisions have been based on parcels, but the ordinance requires the decisions to be based on lots. One commissioner directly spoke about adjacent properties. The commissioner spoke about two 40-foot-wide parcels on Kendall being adjacent lots, and if those Kendall parcels, Kendall parcels are adjacent, then the lots are compatible. Neither of those 40-foot parcels adjoin either of the proposed lots, so they are not adjacent. Staff did not correct that commissioner's misunderstanding. In the past, landmarks has looked at other properties on the block face when voting on a land division. In this case, the analysis was based on both sides of Kendall, which is the back of the block. To properly assess the land division, properties to the south must be included in the assessment. And even if the ordinance was based on general parcel size of the historic district instead of the lots, proposed lot two would be incompatible. Only about 11% of the single-family homes built during the period of significance are in lots under 5,000 square feet, and most of those are in transition areas along Kendall and between Spooner and Leithrake. 75% of the parcels have 6,000 square feet or more. That is the general lot size pattern for the historic district, its larger lots. And just a word about the meaning of adjacent. The city attorney's office claims the Landmarks Commission interpreted adjacent to mean adjoining, and that's not so. It was the preservation planner who told landmarks what adjacent means, and that's sharing a lot line. However, when the ordinance was adopted, staff told landmarks, quote, "Language for the subdivision regulations is appropriate." Based on the history, adjacent means how that word is interpreted.
Thank you, that's your time. We have no other registrants wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of the registrants on this item? Alder Whitley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you allow Lester Pines to finish his last thoughts?
Lester, would you like to conclude your comments?
I believe that what I was saying is that in the 1983 application to have the University Heights Historic District placed on the National Register of Historic Locations, that there was a description, which I have provided in writing, which said, as the, as you go up the hill, the lots become greater. The greatest lots in size are up the hill. Arlington Place is up the hill. The Landmarks Commission, when it considered this land division, only looked at lots on Kendall. Lots on Kendall are on a rectilinear street. Lots on Arlington Place are in a curvilinear street toward the top of the hill, and a small parcel on Arlington Place is incompatible with the rest of the lots on Arlington Place. The only way that you could find compatibility is to compare it to lots on Kendall. That's why the, the commission failed. It didn't look at the whole picture. In fact, it also didn't look at any photographs, so there's no way the commissioners could have actually understood the sizes that they were dealing with. But the critical thing that I was saying is, in 1983, the description was of a general lot size, an explanation of how the lots changed as you get up the hill. That's still the same, because in 1983, all the houses that are on Arlington Place were there already. And so the commission just really went off the rails on that point.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. Could Ms. Leonard finish her comments?
Linda, would you like to conclude your comments?
Hi, thank you. It was just going to be finishing my quick comment about what adjacent means and how, when this ordinance was adopted, the staff discussion was that language for the subdivision regulations is appropriate, and that's the history of what adjacent means, is how it's interpreted under the subdivision regulations, under late local and state subdivision law, not the zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Harrington-McKinnney, questions?
Yes, I think it's only fair to allow Ms. Gassman to complete her sentence.
I believe she had finished, but Roberta, is there anything that you wanted to, to conclude?
If not, thank you.
Thank you, Alder McKinney, I really appreciate the question. I had come to the end, Mayor, but to reiterate, to assume that any of us who are advancing the appeal comes from not caring about affordable housing, the vulnerable, and serving our community is just completely erroneous. Our appeal is based on the facts. We did submit photos, we did submit maps, accurate maps, and from that, we are asking you to consider our legal arguments. These photos, which the individual, I should say, the LLC used in the application, there were not photos in the LLC's application. We took photos, and we, as volunteers and as citizens, studied and produced for you maps, the accurate, relevant maps that should have been used. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Latimer-Burris, questions?
Oh, yes, and I'm not sure all of who wants to answer a couple of questions that I had. There was one person that talked about, you know, the maps and analysis, and that had lived across the street, I believe. So I wanted to ask that person, did they have an opportunity to present maps and analysis to the Landmarks Commission? I'm asking, I was there, so I'm asking just for the record.
I believe that's a question for Monica Alder, but if you could be specific in directing your questions, that would be helpful.
Sure, sure. Monica, could you, did you have an opportunity to present your maps and analysis to the Landmarks Commission?
No, I didn't. I only registered to, for questions, and that didn't come up when, that's what I submitted as public comment for the landmarks hearing, and also, my name wasn't showing up on the Zoom, because there were three of us who had difficulty with the Zoom link, so I had to go across to my neighbors to join. But still, nobody asked questions about it, so no, my maps weren't talked about.
Okay, and then the other question, I, you live on Kendall Avenue, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, so, I guess I always ask the question, is so what? So they're gonna divide the land at Arlington Place? So what?
It's, it's, again, what criteria to be using, because, you know, it's a historic district, and as Lester Pines pointed out, we all abide by that as stewards. We all have these, in this historic district, we have to follow those rules and regulations. And so the division of that lot, which on the maps, if you look at them, there was a full lot there, and it looks like whoever, the Stevens' house and the Jennings' house, they, they shared that lot. And so that full lot is no longer a full lot. In order to make a buildable lot, there's this distortion happening where a lot line is being moved closer to the existing Stevens' place, the 1908, the first house, that was oriented to look as appropriate for University Heights over the university. Also, the Jennings' house was looking over, they're both facing eastward over the university, because one of them, Jennings, was an architect of the buildings on the university. So all of those things weren't coming into play, and the new lot line is just shaving off, again, it's a distortion for the sighting of the original 1908 house.
Okay, thank you. And then I had a question for Mrs. Gassman, I think. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Question for Roberta?
Yes. I'm, I'm curious, and again, I was there, so I experienced it, but why do you, why do you, why are you not confident in, in this process that happened in Landmarks Commission? In a nutshell, could you just tell us what you think was missing?
Sure.
What would have made you more confident about the decision?
Sure, I'd be, I'd be glad to also defer to Jean Halferdy on this, who literally reviewed the tapes of the meeting minute by minute by minute, spending hours doing that. And she, in her documentation and in her work that helped our appeal, addressed issues that also concern me, Alder Person, Aladimer-Burris, and that is, that the actual responses were changing. They were fluid. They weren't actually finding or referring to city language or ordinance, and so that did not give us confidence. We didn't feel, even though I'm sure the staff was well-intentioned, and as I said, I have deep respect for public servants. I've worked with them throughout my career. I cannot stand when public employees get trashed as being lazy bureaucrats, which I've heard for too many years. I don't believe that. They're not lazy. They try to be responsible, but sometimes errors are made, and other person, Aladimer-Burris, what happened in this case is information was missed. Information was not applied in a neutral or complete way, and that did not give the commission data, information, maps, facts, any photos to help them make a thoughtful, full, careful decision. I saw it happening in my eyes. If you look at a map that's flat and doesn't speak to elevations, which is what happened at that landmarks meeting, it's very hard for public citizen commissioners to answer and address their concerns. If you have a photo, a photo can show you the elevation, can show you the curvilinear structure that is on the National Historic Register application that shows that the center of the hill of University Heights, the Drumland, is in fact higher, and the houses that are higher have different lot sizes and different scopes. That was not addressed at the meeting of the Landmarks Commission. And so comparing the 1908 Arlington Place lot, which is just one side of Arlington Place, with the street below it, which is a straight street, not a curving street on a hill, to not compare that 1908 Arlington Place with the very houses across the street, is, was, was just a flawed, incomplete comparison.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And then, as I understand, if this is not, we're acting as a judicial, quasi-judicial committee here, you know, trying to review the evidence, and if this is not sent back, it, it won't, I'm, I'm asking this backwards, so it will not delay, if we don't send it back, they will have the right to divide the, the land, which reminds me of another situation, but why, who cares? What's the problem that would be caused by us just ignoring this? I hope I'm asking correctly.
Roberta, I believe that's an additional question for you.
Yeah, so I'm saying, if, why is it, what damage will be caused if we just ignore it?
Well, you know, ordinances come about for a reason. Laws come about for a reason. I believe in following ordinances, in following the law. That, to me, is the essence of democracy. I believe in following ordinances, in following the law. That, to me, is the essence of democracy. And we know that there are challenges going on to democracy around our world, in our country, and to see this happening in our own community, right here in Madison, where language, ordinance, law would not be considered and allow, therefore, a decision to be made, which would change the character of a historic district as protected by the city for a reason. Protecting historic districts, that enhances the value of a community. It enhances the special nature of a community. It brings in visitors who are committed to historic preservation, who walk our streets on a tour to look at the houses and to admire the architecture that's over 100 years old in some cases. So the danger is to not follow ordinances fully. I'm not talking completely, but to fully not follow ordinances is, would set a dangerous precedent for our community, and it would be harmful, for that reason, of not following the law and of allowing the character and nature of this protected historic asset in the heart of the community to lose its value.
Thank you. And then I just had a couple of questions. I don't want to bore my colleagues, so I just have a couple of questions I'd like to ask Attorney Pines, please.
Lester, we have a few questions for you.
Yeah. So if you could just talk, Attorney Pines, why are you qualified to tell us anything about the law, for one? And if I could just couple that with, we got a memo from our internal legal team, and can you just talk about why you're qualified to talk about this, do you feel? And then what differences do you see?
Well, thank you for the question. Thank you for the question. Let me address my qualifications. I have been an attorney in Madison for 50 years. I have appeared before circuit courts in probably half of the counties in this state, or the Court of Appeals. I've argued over 15 cases before the Wisconsin Supreme Court, and a number of cases before the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals. I am completely familiar with the law about how statutes and ordinances are to be interpreted. And they are to be interpreted based on the fair, the plain language. And sometimes there are ambiguities. Sometimes a word might have different meanings. So when we look at a word, and this I know after practicing in this state and dealing with statutes and ordinances for five decades, that when there is an ambiguity, one of the things that you do right away is look at dictionary definitions. I have done that repeatedly. I have had courts do that repeatedly, especially the Courts of Appeals and the Supreme Court repeatedly look to dictionary definitions. And that's precisely why I submitted to the council the dictionary definitions of adjacent, which means nearby or neighborly. And that's why I submitted the case law to the council from appeals courts, not to say you're bound by those cases, but to show you that there's a structure and a reason to use dictionary definitions. And so that's my, that's my experience. I don't want to go on and on about it. But that's why I have the qualifications to have presented to you, along with Jean Halferty and Monica Messina, the memorandum we did, and presented to you the two emails I sent, in which I did analysis. And one thing that's very important about this is what I submitted late this afternoon, in response to the City Attorney's memorandum, which referred to a statute in the zoning code, which said immediately adjacent. Well, if adjacent meant adjoining, you wouldn't modify it with the word immediately. And those are the things that I have seen over my entire career. That's why I'm qualified to talk about it. Your second question, I'm forgetting exactly what your second question was, if you could just repeat it for me.
So did I. So we're both on the same page. Let me see, I've got notes right here. I get, so you talked about, what I'm hearing you say in some is that, you know, we got to follow the law and look at every word, and when it's, you know, in dispute, then we look to the case law to define it. My second question I'm forgetting, but I do want to say, ask you that regarding the word adjacent, no matter how it's defined, are there other properties in university heights that are of comparable size? Is that's one of the issues that came up? Could you just speak on that?
Okay, yeah. I want to address that. All right. University heights, there are two things that the Commission did not, the two mistakes that the Commission made. One was by using a truncated definition of adjacent to mean adjoining, which it doesn't mean for this purpose. And the other was to not look at the general pattern of lot sizes in the district. If you listened to the Commission hearing, one of the Commissioners said, basically, there is no pattern. There is a pattern. And the pattern is that on rectilinear streets, straight streets, there are smaller lots. And there have been some lot divisions in university heights in the 30, almost 36 years that I've lived there. There are about four. They're all, they were all on straight streets. There has never been a lot division to create a smaller lot on the curvilinear streets, as was described in the 1983 application for historic registration, that come up, courts assumed. And that is something that the Commission refused to look at. And when you look at the report that was submitted in response to our appeal, even in the report, the phrase "general pattern of lot size" was not used by the staff. It would, that was ignored. And you have to look at every part of an ordinance. And in this ordinance, there are two things. Is the proposed lot adjacent, incompatible with adjacent lot sizes, and does it fail to maintain, fail to maintain the general lot size pattern of a historic district? There is a general lot size pattern, and a small lot toward the summit of the hill on a curvilinear street fails to maintain the general lot size pattern. That is really, cannot be refuted. And even in the City Attorney's memo to you late this afternoon, it was not even addressed. Finally, I want to just make one comment about the ownership. Brian Reiber said he's the owner. He's not the owner. A limited liability company called 1908 LLC is the owner, and we don't know who owns that.
All right, thank you. I just, one last question. What would you do differently if you feel like we've made an error in the Landmarks Commission in our interpretation? What would you, what would you do differently so that we don't cause irreparable harm? And that's, I'm gonna jump off, but that's my last question.
All right. Here's my answer to that. First of all, you should reverse the plan Commission's, excuse me, the Landmarks Commission's decision. That will avoid any problem with this 90-day time limit for dealing with a certified survey map, because this was, this was applied for on January 8th, eight days after the LLC bought the property. So to avoid any problem with that time limit, you should reverse the Landmarks Commission. The LLC can then reapply, and there will be then a new hearing before the Landmarks Commission. At that hearing, we will be able to present to the Commission all of the information that we had presented to you through the memorandum, the really detailed memorandum, and subsequent emails explaining the law and the problems and the issues. By doing that, it will give us the opportunity to go back to that Commission without worrying about any time limit. Go back to that Commission and have a full, fulsome, complete hearing, where all of this information that we have developed could be presented and considered by the Commission. Then they can make a truly informed decision. And there is no detriment, whatsoever, to the applicant if you do that. Zero. The applicant will have the same opportunity again, and those of us who are stakeholders, who take care of our properties according to the rules and regulations of the Landmarks Commission, will have an opportunity to make our full presentation, and that will be, as Roberta said, you know, a complete exercise of democracy. There is no harm from reversing this and letting the Landmarks Commission start over. It could only benefit everyone involved.
Thank you. I have another Alders in the queue with questions. So we will move on to item 81, which is amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances related to the composition of the Common Council Executive Committee to modify the CCEC appointment process. On item 81, we have one registrant wishing to speak, Bonnie Rowe of District 11. Do we have Bonnie?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Common Council. I'm calling in to show my support for Agenda Number 81, which I believe would lead to a more fair and equitable makeup of the very important Common Council Executive Committee. The current method of having members hand-selected by the President of the Council has become problematic over the past few years, when the precedent of developing a well-rounded and diverse leadership committee went out the window. The current CCEC is made up of like-minded Alders who generally vote in one block. There isn't much diversity of thought. Every Alder with an opponent was endorsed by the same political party, Progressive Dane. President Currie was voted President. She got to handpick her leadership committee, and that's how it works. She took a play from the previous Council President's handbook. Former Council President Furman chose for his committee three first-time Progressive Dane-endorsed Alders, along with longstanding Progressive Dane-endorsed former Alders Foster and Heck. Everyone endorsed by Progressive Dane, and therefore held accountable for their votes, all in lockstep, whatever the issue. So it's not surprising that earlier this evening, all members voted to put Alder Wajalia's amendment for a more fair, representative, and equitable amendment on file, or in other words, in the trash. As President Currie reminisced tonight, and looking back over their year together as a CCEC, she reminded them that they had kept the TFOG's priorities laid out by the previous committee, handpicked by at the time Council President Furman. Tonight, President Currie acknowledged falling short of passing an Alder pay raise as we head into a $27 million deficit for next year, and was obviously remorseful about it, even though the idea was put before us residents in a referendum on the ballot, and it was soundly defeated. Still, every one of these Alders on the current CCEC went ahead and voted for a near 60% pay increase, regardless of the wishes of the majority of voters, and despite the fact that one month later, they'd be trying to figure out how to solve a $27 million deficit in the upcoming year. And that is the problem with groupthink and echo chambers. There is no diversity of thought, no seeing things from different angles, no room for alternate opinions and opposing voices, no sense of a broad range of viewpoints that would represent residents across this whole city, just lockstep votes cast dutifully and under the watchful eye of Progressive Dane. Adopting Alder Wajalia's proposal would apply equally, regardless of who was President. Any Alder who wishes to sit on the CCEC would be entered into a random drawing. No doubt it would allow for a more fair and equitable process, with more resident voices represented around the table for the good of the whole city. Please vote in favor of Alder Wajalia's proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have no other registrants wishing to speak on item 81. Are there any questions for the registrant? Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yes, thank you so much. I wanted to just go a little broader, because there's different Presidents at different times, and there's always, you know, different, difficult tasks to do, and things can appear one way and go another way. Could you speak more broadly about what do you think the issue is of, you know, having this process specifically diversifying, as I hear what you're saying that needs to be done? Could you speak more generally, not specifically, to our current President, but just generally, what are your thoughts around that? Thank you.
Sure, I'd be happy to give my thoughts. I think I've only been paying attention to things since 2020, and I saw under President Abbas a real willingness to bring collaborative voices around the table, not everyone who thought and voted the same way. I saw that with Sherry Carter when she was the President. And I just feel like it's probably a temptation for any President in this polarized climate that we're in right now to handpick people that would move their agenda along. I think it's something that is risky. It doesn't bring enough voices and diversity of thought around the table. And that's why I think, regardless of who the President is, a more random selection would benefit everyone. I also think all Alders are qualified to sit on the CCEC. I don't think any of you would, would not be able to be a part of that if it's something you desired. So anybody who wanted to throw their hat in the ring, I think would have a much more equal chance and a more reflective view as a whole. Thanks.
Thank you. I have another Alders in the queue wishing to ask questions, and I have no other items with registrants wishing to speak. So we will move on from public comment to item four, which is Legis 82175, the appeal of the Madison Landmarks Commission granting a certificate of appropriateness for a land division at 1908 Arlington Place. And I believe it would be prudent to start with an overview from staff, because you are acting as a quasi-judicial body in this item. So I believe we have Attorney Smith present. So we'll start with, I'm sorry, Alder Bennett?
Before we start, can we, can we get a 10-minute recess?
Alder Bennett moves a 10-minute recess. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of taking a 10-minute recess? Seeing no objection, we will take a 10-minute recess and be back at 8:26. All right, I will call the council meeting back to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
President Curry? President Curry is present. Alder Duncan? Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers? Alder Evers is present. Alder Field is excused. Vice President Figaro Cole? Vice President Figaro Cole is present. Alder Govendarajan? Alder Govendarajan is present. Alder Uguer? Alder Uguer is present. Alder Harrington McKinney? Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Alder Knox is excused. Alder Latimer-Burris? Alder Latimer-Burris is present. Alder Madison? Alder Madison is present. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford is present. Alder Mayadze? Alder Mayadze is present. Alder Rommel? Alder Rommel is present. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere? Alder Revere is present. Alder Vitavir? Alder Vitavir is present. Alder Wajaliya? Alder Wajaliya is present. Alder Bennett? Alder Bennett is present. Alder Conklin? Alder Conklin is present. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. All right. So what's before us is item four, Legisstar 82175, the appeal of Madison Landmarks Commission granting a certificate of appropriateness for a land division at 1908 Arlington Place. And we will have two presentations from staff. First, from Attorney Smith, and then from Dr. Bailey. And then we will move to motions and questions and discussion. And so Attorney Smith, if you would please provide the framework on the council's role tonight and the legal surround.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will, um... So I sent out a memo late this afternoon, which I know all of you appreciate receiving, a seven-page memo at 4:00 in the afternoon. And so, as you also appreciate, I'm sure, me always coming up here and reminding you that in this capacity, you're acting as a quasi-digital body. And so what that means is that you are going to need to make findings, and those findings will be based on the evidence that's presented to you, and you apply that evidence to the law. So backing up, when we read MGO, or I should say, the appeal for the certificate of appropriateness, which is required for this land division since it happens, since it's proposed in the University Heights Historic District. The Common Council, the Landmarks Commission approval of the COA is appealable to Common Council. And your role today is to decide as a threshold if the Landmarks Commission decision is contrary to the applicable standards under Section 41.18, subsection 4. And then if that's the case, you may, by a favorable vote of the majority of the members, reverse or modify the decision of the Landmarks Commission, or for the matter, back to the Commission with or without instructions. So what, your role here is to kind of analyze the standards that you see that are in 41.184, which talks about land divisions and combinations in a historic district. And Dr. Bailey will talk about the materials that were presented to the Landmarks Commission, answer questions, and really is able to address kind of the historic lot-size pattern in the historic district and all of those things that I am woefully unqualified to talk about the, the history of the University Heights Historic District. But instead, what I can provide you with some guidance on is the, because much has been made of what does adjacent mean in our ordinances, and how you decide what adjacency means. The, Dr. Bailey can talk about what the Landmarks Commission interpreted adjacent to mean, but it is kind of one of those issues that's before you. So when we are asking you to interpret your own ordinances, there is this legal presumption in, or this, I should say, this pretty persuasive case law in Wisconsin that provides a presumption of correctness to the municipality's interpretation of their own ordinance. So what that means is that it is up to you here to decide what you believe adjacent to mean in this, in the context of this ordinance. And as my memo kind of laid out, there are different avenues that you can use to support a definition. It is not the case that there is kind of binding legal precedent for a statewide definition of what adjacency means. There, like, we don't get, you know, dicta come to us about like, what your words must mean in your ordinances for things like this. And I can, it can answer questions about kind of how the case law might come to you that says you have to interpret adjacent to mean a specific thing that is in the cases that were presented by the appellant, if you'd like. But the, that is, though, one piece of information that you could use to inform what you believe adjacent to mean. Alternatively, you can look to their definitions in dictionaries for what adjacent means, because we don't have an enumerated definition in our own ordinances. And I put some definition, some kind of a very cursory Google for four different dictionary sites to say what you could see adjacency to mean, right? You could look at Meron Webster. You could look at Blacks Law Dictionary. You could go across the pond and think about the Oxford English Dictionary, the Cambridge Dictionary. But that is one piece that you could use when you're interpreting what adjacency means. And then final, and then you also can look in ordinances. And while, I think it's, and I do think it's persuasive to think about how adjacency, or sorry, adjacent is used internally in our own ordinances, and what the kind of plain reading of that may be. So, and it is clear by both kind of the, over 130 times in Chapter 28, the zoning code, where adjacents use the practices of zoning staff that adjacent has historically in our city, in terms of this sphere, meant adjoining. And so, but it is your determination to make. So while it is the opinion of our office that in the context of our ordinances, adjacent means adjoining, when, that does not mean that you have to agree with us. But in creating the record for what you believe adjacent should be interpreted as, I would just, you know, ask that you kind of lay out exactly why you've made that, why you would argue for that definition, why that definition is distinct in the land division section of Chapter 41 that is unlike the other sections of Chapter 41 and Chapters 28. And that, you know, and that being said, the, you know, to be kind of mindful of if it is the understanding of the council that adjacent means not adjoining, means maybe nearby or neighboring, or kind of a, in that, in that grouping that the appellant is arguing for, that the appellant is arguing for, that we may be coming back to you with several clarifications or revisions of sections throughout chapters 28 and 41 to clarify that that word is used as zoning staff intends and understands it to be. I think at this point, the, that is kind of the lay of the land, like, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bailey and then just be available to questions after you hear the content of the historic district and the, and how adjacent falls into the bigger picture of what the historic preservation ordinance says.
Thank you, Attorney Smith. Dr. Bailey?
Going to share my screen. Okay. Good evening. So going through the matter before you. So here we have the image of the property in question, including both the parcel boundaries. Parcels are a tax definition. Lots are a different type of legal definition. We have here legal lots of record that are the parcel boundaries that are shown in green. We also have platted lot lines that are the other lines that are showing up in blue. Sometimes these are overlapping, sometimes they are not. And that really plays to the ways in which these neighborhoods evolve over time. The legal lots of record don't always align with the platted lot lines. And with our current requirements, we look to resolve those underlying lot lines so that we have a cleaner record of exactly what we're dealing with when we're talking about lots. And there we go. Okay, so the appeal is appeal of the COA that the Landmarks Commission granted for land combination and division. This proposal is for, both for a combination and a division because it would be a combination for the, there's currently two unresolved underlying lot lines, so combining all that, but then including a new lot line that would make this two separate legal lots of record. So for history of the overall project, this is, for what I'm here to talk to you tonight, is predominantly about the landmarks approval. For any land combinations and divisions with a local historic designation, be it a landmark or a historic district, then there needs to be an approval from the Landmarks Commission for that to happen. However, that is in part because that is a requirement under the zoning ordinance for the certified survey map process. So there's the CSM. So I have the timelines for both of these things. While they are separate processes, they do impact one another. And so the main highlight here for the certified survey map is that per state statute, there is a 90-day limit for us as a city making a decision on the certified survey map. For that, that means we as a city, we have to make a decision to approve the certified survey map or deny the certified survey map by April 7th. So that's sort of a heads up. We'll come to that in a little bit, too. Okay, so for what we're looking at, this is the survey that came in for both the landmarks review and for the certified survey map process showing the dotted lines are the underlying unresolved lot lines for what was originally platted. And then the proposal is to get rid of the one there on the west and then the one that's on the right. Yes, we're getting rid of it. You can also conceptualize it as they are adjusting the lot line to shift it over so that there is a larger buildable lot for infill construction within the local historic district. For looking at the layers to this, the Landmarks Commission's process is looking at both a fine-grained approach by looking in close and looking at the adjacent lots. Will this, the ordinances set up to presuppose that the Landmarks Commission will approve these. But then it provides circumstances where it shouldn't approve them. So the presumption is that combinations and divisions will be approved unless they find that it's incompatible with adjacent lot sizes or fails to maintain the general lot size pattern of the, development pattern of the district. As you can see with this, the underlying lot lines for what was originally platted and then what are the legal lots of record, which are also the parcels in this instance, don't necessarily always have a lot to do with each other. The ways that these areas have evolved have changed over time. So with the landmarks process for land divisions and combinations, we are both looking at what we had originally, what we have now, and also taking some snapshots in time. The sandborne fire insurance map are a great resource for that, for looking at how things have changed. So with that, what I have here on the left-hand side is the 1942 sandborne map showing how things were configured at that point in time. So you can see the area that is sort of roughly lot two, showing that unresolved underlying lot line, showing it as a separate developable lot. But then the building for 1908 Arlington on its separate configuration that is approximately what we're looking at now. For, at the meeting, there was some discussion about what is the precedent for this. For, in my five years of serving with the city, there have not been a lot of land combinations and divisions in University Heights. They are mostly in other historic. The time that I've been with the city, we've had one other land combination and division, and it happened to be in November, so just a couple months ago. So that was at 2020 Chadborn. And so a similar situation in that they were resolving two underlying lot lines and then creating a new lot line for development of a, creation of a separate developable lot. So that was approved. There were no public comments on that. It had the same types of submitted materials as we had for 1908 Arlington Place. It is similar to the types of submitted materials that we've had for every other land combination and division that the Landmarks Commission has approved. So they are mostly similar in terms of their configuration. So for the applicable standards, I concluded the whole paragraph, but really there's three components. One of those is only for landmarks, designated landmarks, and we're not dealing with a designated landmark in this situation. So again, the presupposition is Landmarks Commission will approve these unless they find it's incompatible with adjacent lot sizes. So are we going to create something that is very out of character with its adjoining, the adjoining properties? When, when I talk through both land combinations and divisions and also there's a section in the zoning ordinance for development adjacent to a landmark, that's 28.144. I always give Landmarks Commission the instruction, as was given to me by the zoning administrator, that when we're talking about adjacent, we mean adjoining. And I usually do this little hand gesture to show adjoining because that's apparently the universal gesture for it. And that is always the way Landmarks Commission talks about it. So that is the really focused in on, is this going to be incompatible with the adjacent lot sizes? Also looking at the general lot size pattern of the historic district. So at the meeting, Landmarks Commission looked at the map for the historic district. Look at, there really is a variety of lot sizes. For, as Lester Pines was talking about, as you go further up the hill, there are larger lots. That is correct. On this block, though, there's a variety of lot sizes. And what was proposed are two lots that would be comparable to the general lot size pattern of that particular block and in the general vicinity. Landmarks Commission is both looking down very close at what is happening in the immediate vicinity and stepping back to look at what is happening in the overall historic district and then coming sort of midpoint, what is happening in this area of the historic district. So also, though, with the applicable standards in terms of the policy, historic designation is meant to encourage sensitive new construction and reinvestment in our historic districts. It is not prevent, intended to prevent development. These design standards are to shape how these places evolve. It does not freeze these places in amber. Now with that, if the common council upholds the Landmarks Commission's decision, this will create a new developable lot for potential infill construction. There are design standards for that. That's in MGO 41.27 for the standards for new construction. And any new construction would need to abide by those standards. So for tonight, after the public hearing, which we have done, you make a decision for finding if the Landmarks Commission's decision was contrary to their applicable standards. So I've got a bunch of language up here. It's also in the staff memo. So you could deny, but for each of these, again, with the quasi judicial, you need to make very specific findings for why you're denying the appeal or approve, why you are approving the appeal and changing the landmarks decision. You could refer back to the Landmarks Commission. However, we're running into that April 7th deadline and a referral back does not somehow change that deadline. We would need to make, we as a city would need to make a decision on the certified survey map by April 7th. So that's what I've got.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey.
Questions for staff? Alder Bennett?
Thanks. I'm going to, Attorney Smith, darling, can you remind us, how many times does the word adjacent come up in our ordinance or chapter 28 or ordinances? You said it.
Yeah, so I did just a search of terms when I downloaded the document today. So that was my scientific analysis. If you're looking at a different ordinance than when you download chapter 28, I don't stand by this. But today, there is, I can get you the exact thing. There is, it appears 130 times in chapter 28. And I think that it appears four times, maybe, in, five times in chapter 41. So it is much more prevalent in the zone.
Right. And like each time, adjacent means neighbor, not, does not mean, means adjoining, not neighboring, right?
Yes. So in, so I think that it is, when you look at chapter 41, and perhaps Dr. Bailey can kind of talk about her interpretations of chapter 41. But when you look at chapter 41, the other sections, for example, that the, that a soffit vent needs to be painted as the same color as the adjacent soffit. Not knowing that much about soffits or vents, but the way that I read that is that it's like the vent is adjoining the soffit. But it could mean nearby soffit, right? Like that, I think, is a little bit squishy. But when you look at chapter 28, which is, is, as Dr. Bailey talked about, is something that is really read together with chapter 41, right? Like that historic preservation and zoning handle different things, but they are nonetheless two areas that talk to each other. And in chapter 28, almost universally, and it is the, and it is the longstanding practice of the zoning administrator and the zoning staff, when they interpret their ordinances, provide that feedback to the public, to people who are asking for interpretations of the zoning code, adjacent is understood to mean adjoining. And I think that is very, very consistent and more, more clear when you look at the provisions of the zoning code, right? Like when you're talking about a setback adjacent to the street, for example. I think the plain language reading of that is that the setback is what is, is seen in reference to the street that it is touching, right? That that is that, that adjoining piece.
Right. And like, I just want to make it very clear to us as a council, as a, like, our quasi judicial body for tonight. Like, when I read your memo, the thing that really popped out to me as really concerning is should the council tonight choose to interpret adjacent as meaning neighboring and not adjoining would likely require you and the city's attorney's office to make a more, to make substantial revisions to our zoning code because of what you just said. So can you walk us through what that process would mean if we decided today to just upend what has been the legal precedent that the city has operated on for the past numerous years?
Well, that might be an unintended consequence of the interpretation of adjacent to mean something other than adjoining in the context of zoning and historic preservation. That concern is not a, a metric for your determination for an appeal of the COA, right? So I appreciate that, that's something to think about. And I flag that as, as, as a companion piece to when you are discussing your understanding and your interpretation as a body, or in this case, your interpretation as the city to what our ordinances mean. That's something, that's why I want to call attention to how adjoining interplays in other sections of the code. That being said, when you are making your action here as a quasi judicial body, the repercussions on other ordinances is not necessary, is not a part of 41.20.
Right. I understand it's not necessarily something legally. I just wanted to know notes for, like, ourselves if it would impact other ordinances. Anyways, I rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions?
Uh, yes. I want to refer first back.
Alder, can you bring the mic closer to you? Thank you.
I wanted to refer back to the April 7th. And so I want some clarity on if this were to be referred back to the Landmark Commission. Could you just restate the emphasis for April the 7th? And so what I'm looking for is, is that details about April the 7th? And what are the options if it is sent back? And how does that, how do we eliminate the April 7th? That's kind of choppy, but that's what I'm trying to get at.
Dr. Bailey, do you want to address that one?
Actually, I would recommend that we deal with that.
Attorney Smith?
Sure. So when we are talking about April 7th, it is because there is a requirement in state statute that in municipal, that when a CSM is submitted to a municipality, the municipality must act on it in 90 days. Or if we fail to act, then it gets approved. And when the, so the action is either to approve it, approve it with conditions or deny. And if you, and then kind of like, the subsidiary piece of that is that in our ordinances, you have to, in order for a CSM to be granted in a historic district, you have to have, the applicant, if required, to have a COA, must have a COA. So, um, the, and I will say that, like, approving with conditions is almost without, without exception, all of the CSM that you see before you, right? So when a CSM is submitted, all of the different city agencies that work in that space are going to recommend conditions that would come along with the CSM. So very rarely, if at all, you will ever be recommended to approve a CSM as submitted by the applicant. So while there So while there are, like, kind of three actions that you make, you can think of approve and approve with conditions as like the same action. So the entirety of that has to be wrapped up within 90 days, or there is an automatic approval of the CSM as applied for by the applicant. And the referring it to landmarks, you can, right? Because at the, on the other hand, it is one of the actions that's allowed to you when you're looking at an appeal of the COA. So I can't say that you shouldn't, could not refer it to landmarks. But that might have an effect on the CSM because the referring it will not be completing one of the actions, right? So that as a city, we are not able to agree on, to extend the 90 days. The applicant can ask for an extension of the 90 days, but the city can't impose it. And so I think that the question is, and it is, is what happens on April 7th if you are referring it back to landmarks for additional information, but it hasn't come back to, but there's no way for it to come back to council before that. I think there's a case to be made that the city has failed to make an action on it. So then is the CSM as applied, approved? I don't know. We're kind, Mike, we're going to have to kind of weigh that if the time comes to it. So while the CSM and the timeline of the CSM is, again, not a, not a metric in the appeal and that it, that you are supposed to be looking at, it is, it is my recommendation that you make a decision today, right? To either approve or deny in order to not, not implicate this 90-day deadline that we're pushing up against.
Kate, a follow-up question is, the clock begins to tick for the 90 days. And rolling back, what are the instances that you can, do you have to start all over if you're going to roll back the 90 days? How do you do that? Because I think what I'm hearing and I need to understand is, is that the clock has started, it started ticking, and it is the 90 days that some action has to happen. So even if it's referred, does that mean that the clocks? How do you stop, how do you stop the clock?
We can't.
Can't stop the clock unless the applicant asks for the clock to be extended. It is clearly the intent of the state statutes, and the state statutes are the governing authority here. As a municipality, we're only given the powers that we are conferred upon by the state statute, and they're very clear in their, in the statute when it regards to CSM. We cannot extend the clock. Only the applicant can, which I don't believe they've asked to do.
But the applicant could ask, ask for an extension, and then that would stop the clock, or start the process all over again?
It doesn't restart the process. They can ask for an extension. I don't know why they would here, if they're looking in their own best interests to, but yes, they are the only actor in this entire space that could ask for an extension.
Okay, I'll come back with the.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitter.
Okay, we'll continue on this vein. Could we, tonight, refer the item to the April 3rd Landmarks Commission meeting for them to, we'd have to decide what the specificity instructions were for sending it back, because we know we need to be very specific about that. And at the same time, tonight, conditionally approve the CSM dependent on the findings of the April 3rd Landmarks Commission. Would that meet the 90-day requirement?
Can you say that one more time?
So could we, tonight, approve the CSM conditional on the Landmarks Commission meeting of April 3rd, of which we would re-refer the item back to finding, reinforcing their original findings that a certificate of appropriateness is granted? So basically, could we say, if we refer it back and they re-look at this, and they say, yep, we still think we're right, it goes forward? And if they say, actually, we looked at it again, and we think we were wrong the first time, it stops?
Um, I think the question is, and Mike, please jump in if you disagree. I think the question is, is that the Landmarks Commission action is an unknown, right? Like, they, and then that can be appealed back to you, right? So the Landmarks Commission could, could re-approve the COA. I mean, first of all, under our ordinances, if there is not a valid COA, then the CSM can be denied, right? So that is already a condition. It was a condition that was put, that was recommended by the Plan Commission when they reviewed it, but it is kind of redundant because it's already in the ordinances. So when does the review process end, right? So this, so say Landmarks grants the certificate of appropriateness. The neighbors can appeal that back to council. It kind of can continue forever, and I don't, I think that creating a condition that the city is, by that condition, extending the statutory requirement of 90 days without the approval of the applicant runs afoul of the statutory provisions and the intent of the statute. The statute in, is, on CSMs is, is very clear. So you could refer it back under the action that's in front of you, right? Because the review that you are making is the Historic Preservation Appeal, ordinance appeal to council, and referral to the Landmarks Commission is an action in our ordinances. And I frankly, I don't know what happens if on April 7th, the appellant tries to file their CSM, saying that the municipality didn't act on it within the 90 days.
But they would have, but if we, if we say, tonight, as council, we say we conditionally approve the CSM based on, if the, if the, if we send it back to the Landmarks Commission, which meets on April 3rd next, that if they condition, if they refine the same way in their original findings, that then it's approved. If they don't, then they, then they're rescinding their certificate of appropriateness, and then the CSM is not approved. Either way, we've acted within the 90 days. Isn't that correct? If on April, if we, if we, tonight, say we approve it conditionally and send on what happens on April 3rd with landmarks.
Heather, do you have something to add in? Sorry, I mean.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add in, the April 3rd meeting is a special meeting to call, to deal with one agenda item. I have a quorum, just barely, and I have that quorum based on it being a fast meeting. Turning this into a long meeting, we might lose quorum, and we might not be able to take action by shoehorning in a large and controversial item to a special meeting.
Okay, I have another question. And that is, it's going to be moot, but I'm going to ask it anyway. If we wish to send it back to landmarks, what is the level of specificity that we would have to provide, knowing that there is already a written record of the Landmarks Commission assessing both the adjacency issue and the general lot size in the district? Like what, what more specificity would we have to give them in order for them to have an appropriate document? Could we simply say something along the lines of, we re-refer it back to more thoroughly document the findings of adjacency and similar lot sizes in the district? Is that sufficient direction to send it back to the Landmarks Commission?
So I'll let Dr. Bailey talk about the types of instructions the Landmarks Commission would find helpful, or would, would find complete in here. But in terms of the record that you need to establish, the record will first need to be based on the public comment, the materials submitted by the public commenters, the, the materials submitted by staff, questions and answers, your interpretations of the ordinance, all of that. So kind of specific findings of evidence to why in the record that you are presented with today, the, exactly how the Landmarks Commission's decision was contrary to the applicable standards under section 41. So if you create that record, that's kind of the record that you need to create, then you, then I'll, then I'll let Heather chime in to what the type of direction Landmarks Commission would, would find helpful in, in furthering their own discussion on the 48.18 standards.
Okay, so for Landmarks Commission, I direct them to give findings for why they are making such a decision. And so at this specific meeting, Landmarks Commission, as they, they would have discussion, and they would take this, but they would look at things in the presentation. And then they kept coming back to, Heather, could you put the standards back up again? And then they would talk about the standards and what were applicable. And then when they got to the time of making a motion, they stated the reasons why they thought it met the two required standards of approval for this particular application. So they have said, they had made findings on the record for why they thought it met the standards of approval. You could turn it back to the Landmarks Commission for them to say it again, say it differently, at which point, if they make a new decision, then that can also be appealed back to common council. Yes, and that's where we are.
And Attorney Haas would like to add something?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's an excellent point, and I think the way Attorney Smith, you know, tried to lay that out is also accurate. As I'm sitting here thinking about this appeal issue, I think maybe we don't have 100% answer, but my thought is, as Kate mentioned, and as Dr. Bailey mentioned, that additional decision of landmarks could be appealed. And so it doesn't become a final decision until it's back at the council. And then that's going to be beyond that April 7th date. And at that point, the property owners can have an argument that their CSM has been approved by operation of the law. That's my thought without researching it, but I think that's how potentially it could play out. So I don't think we can count, you know, sitting here that we can count on having the ability to, to not approve the CSM after that point.
Great, thank you, Alder. Alder Rahila.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So there's a lot of case, there's a case to be made. And we have heard from the residents that a lot of information is recovered after the Landmark Commission's decisions. So my question is, has the new information been shared with the applicant?
I'm sorry, Alder.
So based on the testimonial, we, and the letters that we got, these, we heard that a lot of information is recovered after the Landmark Commission's.
Do you mean the information from registrants?
Yes.
So that, all of that information would be available in the public record?
Yes. But as, that's my second question, is why can the city be the convener to evaluate the new information discovered after the decision-making? So that at least, you know, we can see that, you know, even though we have a deadline of April 7th, but perhaps we can explain to the applicant that this, because of this information, maybe we need to extend the timeline, and maybe it's the state statutes that we cannot extend, perhaps?
I mean, seeing nobody else wanting to jump in, I think you're back at the same problem, which is even if the city did take that role to convene all the parties, and I guess suggest to the applicant that they request a delay, you don't know tonight if that will be successful or not. So you still are up against, tonight, needing to act on the CSM because this body doesn't have another meeting before the deadline. So if you had another meeting before the deadline, you could do all sorts of things, knowing that you would have a chance to come back and act on it, but you don't. So you have to take some action on the CSM tonight, essentially. And Dr. Bailey would like to weigh in.
So yeah, I'll go first, and then Attorney Smith can follow up. For the information that was provided to common council, there is some new testimony. But in terms of the mapping that was provided by the neighbors, that came in as part of the public comment for the Landmarks Commission. I did not put up in my staff presentation materials from the public comments, but just because I did not use them in the staff presentation does not mean that the Landmarks Commission did not receive them. Those items were posted in Legistar, they were emailed to the Landmarks Commission members. They had that information for when they were serving in their quasi judicial role for weighing the variety of evidence. The Landmarks Commission does not do what I tell them to do. I am part of the evidence and part of the information that is provided to them, and then they weigh that information and make their decision. So yes, there's been some new testimony that has come to the common council as part of the appeal, but there was a great deal of public testimony that also went to the Landmarks Commission when they completed their part of the review for the certificate of appropriateness.
Thank you, Alder. Attorney Smith?
Um, yeah, so that, okay, so like, there's not, let's be, like, honest with ourselves. The applicant is not going to want to extend, does that sound right? Like, none of that is in their own self-interest to do. Might they? Maybe, I don't know. But, but the, the CSM and the timeline of the CSM is not, is the background, of course, is part of the noise you're hearing when you're deciding your, the appeal of the COA. But it is not a standard or a reason to approve, deny, or approve with conditions the Landmarks Commission approval of the COA. The CSM exists separately. So, and is in fact a separate matter on your agenda, right? So I just, I want to remind Alders that the record that you need to create to support your, the COA appeal and the decision you're making there needs to not be based on what may or may not happen with the CSM.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel.
Thank you, Mayor. If people still have questions for Attorney Smith, my question's for Dr. Bailey.
We have three other Alders in the queue. I think we're just going back and forth, Alder. I think it's fine.
Heather, could you put up the map that has the layers of the parcels and the lots?
Let me get to it, just a moment. Wrong directions, and then I need to share.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm learning a lot about lots and parcels. I thought I knew stuff, but now I'm learning more. So let's learn together, right? So let's learn together, right? So on this map, at first I was really frustrated by this map, I still kind of am, because it's got the little blue lines and got the green lines. And so there are different things. But Heather, could you tell us what the numbers mean at the top of the green line and at the bottom? What those numbers are across the diagram?
So those numbers are measurements for the platted lot line. So, and this is, this section is the original, well, as you see, you got some language there on the right-hand side, but we've got a portion of this block that is for the original University Heights plat and a portion of this block that is the University Heights replat. So those dimensions are for the platted lot lines.
So those are the quote lot lines that are the things that we need to look at?
That is part of it. That's why the language for the land combination and division deals with both a fine tune and a stepping out, looking at, because this is how these neighborhoods have evolved over time. So there is the original plating, and if we just went with what was originally platted, then we are ignoring the lot development pattern of the district. So there are changes over time. What we have now is different from what we had at different points over the past century, and it is obviously very different from what was originally platted. So Landmarks Commission is taking into account multiple layers. It isn't just a, well, we're only doing this, or we're only doing this. It's, they are looking at layers.
But is it fair to say that the 120, 60, 60, 60 across the top is what you would call the lot versus the parcel?
There is a legal lot of record, and so what you are seeing there in what is green, those are parcels, but those are also legal lots of record. So if you go to the land transaction with the legal description for 1908 Arlington, it will talk about the portions of Lot 8 that are included and the portions of Lot 9, and then the portions, well, all of Lot 9 and the portions of Lot 10, and give the general dimensions and configuration for that. Because they are defining the, both the legal lot of record and then the underlying platted lots that are a part of that. Both of those things are included.
But the legal lot of record isn't language in the ordinance. So it's kind of new language to me, right, even tonight? So you're telling, you said, Landmarks, I watched, and you said, the lot is the, oh, now I don't remember exactly what you said, but you made the distinction between the parcel being the tax entity and the lot being something different. And I don't have your exact words right in front of me. So what I'm trying to get at is, this proposed land division, I believe, is 42 feet. Is that correct?
Let me go back to the map a bit.
The dimension across the street frontage, I guess, 44?
Here you go.
42 at the top. So if you compared it to all those other numbers, I mean, when we talk about what's compatible, are we comparing that 42 dimension with the ones that we're showing 60, 120, 60, 60, 60, or with something else?
So it's, yes. Again, I go with the, it's the layers. And is it compatible does not mean is it identical? Is it compatible? So they are looking at both what is happening with the legal lots of record that it is adjacent to. It is looking at the lot development pattern of the district that takes us from the original plating to how these properties have evolved over time.
So what is the range of something before it becomes incompatible? So if I were to say the other things are 60, 60, 60 versus 42, is 42 still in the range of compatibility, or is it not compatible?
Well, so I mean, that's up to the review of the Landmarks Commission. And so for what they're looking at, for this process, they are looking at maps, and they, hence why I do a presentation with a PowerPoint showing the different maps, both the current and the, what I have in GIS for city mapping purposes, and then what the historic maps are. Because they are looking at the compatibility based on what it looks like, and does this look like it is compatible? And if they think it isn't, then they will say no. They have denied land combinations in the past and stated the reasons why that it wasn't compatible with the adjacent lot sizes. So it is a design review, looking at how do these proportions compare to the adjacent to the vicinity to the overall district?
Can you bring up that thing that was the parcel analysis map that you had at Landmarks?
Let me, from the application materials? Let me see if I've got that. I do have the application materials.
Thank you.
On my computer here. Let me get to. Sorry, just a moment. Okay, and I gotta close this out. Oop. I've got too many things going on on my screen. Okay, is this what you're talking about?
Yes, thank you. So this, you know, is the map I sort of sat and stared at for a very long time, but it's a parcel map, it's not a lot map. But if you look at it at the level of the parcel, you can see, well, it's generally larger lots surrounding this area. And, you know, from the testimony we heard, it's the top of the hill, and that was the development pattern, was, you know, these were the original larger lots. But then during the meeting, you said like the A and B numbers were, I don't remember which if it was, I think it was the B was similar to Lot 2. And then it struck me the other day that I, maybe I misunderstood, but now we're comparing a parcels with a lot. And that's where my head started spinning, Dr. Bailey. Can you help with that?
Sure. So in this instance, they are legal lots of record.
So then if that's the lot of record, you could say the proportionality of that area, it's their larger lots, but they're, they're larger parcels. But, but then you would argue underlying them are smaller lots. So that's how I struggle back and forth, because you go back to that other map and the 66, you know, there's one, next to the curvy one on the top, there's one, two, three, four, five houses, but there's only three lots according to that older map that you showed. So, you know, the underlying lots obviously got changed, as you're saying, but I just, when you're telling the Landmarks Commission that we have to look at, you know, the incompatibility question with lots and the general lot size, it seems, it's harder to see that this is compatible if it's, the average range is between 60 and 80, and this one's 40. So that's where I kind of got stuck, that maybe it's not compatible. You know, I have a lot of other questions, but I can stop there if other people have questions. But I think that's the question I need to answer to, is if, you know, this legal lots of record, I get that it's sort of a combo thing and a historic thing, but it's not in the ordinance. So I'm having a hard time figuring out how to apply the knowledge. I mean, I think our common sense knowledge is that we look at those parcels from a parcel view.
Alder, a question still.
That's my, you know, I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor. I'll stop.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris, questions?
Oh goodness. So one thing I wanted to ask Dr. Bailey, and finally starting to sink in, because I remember in the training that there's a difference between the parcel, lot, and platted lot, and it all gets mixed in. So the platted lot, is that the legal lot of record then? Is that what, when Alder Rommel was talking about?
No.
Okay. Okay, so can you go back to the platted lot line versus parcel? Because I think that adds into it, and then I'll ask my other questions.
Okay, well, wait, first of all, let me, so we have a definition of lot in the, in Chapter 41. So lot of record, a lot that is part of a subdivision or certified survey map recorded in the office of the Dane County Register of Deeds, or a parcel of land, the deed of which was recorded in the office of the Dane County Register of Deeds. So per the tax assessor, they can do other parcels, because that is a tax record. But we are talking about, when we say lot of record, we mean recorded with a deed. So there's the legal description that is a part of the deed, hence that takes into account the underlying platted lots. They are two separate things. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Finally. Okay. And then for you, I don't think I had any other questions, but let me just see. Oh, so the CSM, is that driven first by planning, the CSM, is that first?
It's a part of the zoning ordinance, the certified survey map process is a part of the zoning ordinance.
Right, so we, but, so that comes out of like planning, right?
Planning staff is involved with that. Zoning staff is involved and planning staff is involved.
So under Landmarks Commission, just trying to ask clearly, we're not really dealing with that. We're getting that from planning. Am I saying that correctly?
Possibly.
Okay. Okay, and then, let's see what else I had. Actually, I had some questions for Attorney Smith, so I don't know.
Go ahead, Alder.
Okay, so, just a second, let me get myself together here, I've got so many notes. So Attorney Smith, if we disapprove this and with justifications, does that, I'm gonna speak in very plain terms, no legal terms here, here, does that kill the deal? Does that kill the CSM? And we're out of the 90-day deadline?
Okay, so first of all, the CSM is in 16.23, not Chapter 28. I should have put that in, because it's in the record. But if the COA is denied, then yes, the CSM is dead.
Okay, so it'd reset the clock and they would have an opportunity to reapply? It wouldn't preclude them from doing it?
Sure.
Okay. So that is something that we could reset the clock. The other thing is, just a second, I'm going down here, so a lot of it get answered. And this is actually my second time going through this. We've actually asked more questions than happened at Landmarks. Commission is very complicated, and Dr. Bailey knows what she's talking about, and she's, again, waiting on us to, you know, hopefully to catch anything that she might not have got, gotten, or is unsure about. The other thing I wanted to ask you about is, when you said something about dicta in the very beginning, can you define what that means? You were talking about dicta in relationship to the word adjacent, which is one of the issues that we're, we're struggling with.
I don't remember what I said, but, so, like, when you go to law school, dicta means the, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that, because there's nothing more obnoxious than lawyers using legalese and assuming that people know what they're talking about. So dicta means like the langu, the, the writing in an opinion that is not the finding of the opinion, right? So like, there's a case, and the case says that X stat, X statute, provision of statute is unconstitutional, right? Like, that's the holding of a case, right? That's what, what the case stands for. But then, because, as I'm proving here, lawyers like to talk, right? Like, we just want to write every word that we can possibly think of in a opinion, there is going to be a whole lot of tangents and, and, and other things that the opinion is going to say, that's going to talk about, that is not necessarily the holding of the case. And all of that is considered dicta.
Okay. I ask that specifically because, you know, like, my understanding of it is sometimes it can create a definition or, you know, in an unintentional manner. So I guess it's going to, my next question is, when you were reviewing, you know, the tape and reviewing our questioning and trying to make a decision, did you see that we, did we make a decision, a finding of what the word adjacent meant?
No, it's not really, you know, I wasn't in the Landmarks Commission meeting, I don't, I watched it, and I, my memory is that there was an understanding of what adjacent meant, and that adjacent was understood during the conversation among the commissioners to be adjoining as kind of posited by Dr. Bailey was, was a definition that was used by the city when we're talking about adjacency. I don't think, I don't know if there was like a, I don't think there was like a, we find that adjacent means, it means adjoining. We do not find that it means, means neighboring. But it certainly, my memory was that it was part of the decision-making process by Landmarks, but when you are all evaluating this now, you have the opportunity to make that clear finding, if you would like to, for the record, and that would be fantastic from the perspective of having a review of a record for foreign appeal.
Or would we also be able to send it back to Landmark to, you know, let's say we denied it? Could we deny it and send it back to Landmark with getting a clearer definition of the three issues that I see, which are maps definitions and, you know, the plans? Those are three issues. Would we be able to have, part of our instructions is to have them address each of these issues, point to the record where it's in the record that we discussed it and we decided what that meant? The reason I'm asking that is Alder Bennett had asked you in the beginning, how many times is adjacent mentioned in Chapter 41? I think that was what, what it was. It was five times versus overall, and I'm thinking it's 28, but don't quote me if I'm wrong on that, it was made 130 times. And this is something that from my recall, that we struggled with, a lot shorter than the time we've spent here. So, did I lose you there with my question?
Yeah, I would, I would say that under the, under 41.20, the referral to landmarks with the instruction to have a statement on the record for the Landmarks Commission interpretation of adjacent as a clear statement would be an allowable action under 41.20. And again, those actions happen as, after the, you all as council members provide a record, so clear and articulated reasons based on the evidence presented to you, why the commission's decision was contrary to the standards in 41.18. Once you find that, then the, you know, sub A is you make, approve, deny, or refer with instructions.
Okay, and is that to say that we could use all the language that you just said and to say that it's unclear, the record is unclear, or we are not sure if we actually weighed in all the evidence? We brought in new evidence here? Is that also appropriate for us to say it's unclear and we need clarity there, and so therefore we're denying it?
It's not my job to put the thumb on the scale of whether or not the record was unclear. That's the determination that as the quasi-judicial body, you need to make. I am just articulating to you and reminding, because I am nothing if not a broken record on creating, and asking you to create said record, that citing facts and evidence presented to you as to why your interpretation of, of... to you as to why your interpretation of the law as it's presented, so as it's written to you, that the applicable standards were not met. But I am not weighing in on whether or not the applicable standards were met by the Landmarks Commission. That is your role.
Okay. Just one more question. Thank you for that. And I guess this is a circular argument, but where do we have it? What evidence have we been presented that we defined, made a definition, that we considered all of the things that were presented tonight? And some of them were not presented fully, other than we got the email with a lot of documents? And Heather does a great job. She gives us a lot of stuff, but I'm not sure that we're, it's kind of on us. I'm not sure that these difficult decisions, that we spend the time that we need to spend to know everything and ask the right questions and, you know, bring up our concerns. So where in the record is it that we made these decisions? It seems like it's just a full circle that's repeating itself. It's just circling back, circling back and putting the onus on Dr. Bailey. So when you reviewed it, where did you see that we did what was required for us to do?
So with all due respect, Alder, I would recommend that you make, have that discussion with your fellow Alders in the discussion about what the record has. I think it would be inappropriate for me to say my opinion about what was in the record. That's kind of stepping outside of the role that I can play here. I would, I can, I provided my opinion in the memo about what adjacent meant means, but also reminded you again that it is your, I mean, as I say, your, like, the council role to interpret its own ordinances. So you could throw my memo out, like, you know, no. So, but the, whether or not there was enough evidence in the record to support your findings will come out of your discussion with your fellow Alders, not my opinion.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, additional questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Applicable standards not met for, and I'm going to list seven reasons for the record. So I feel that the applicable standards were not met and deserves referral back to the Landmark Commission. One presumption.
There's a question here, Alder?
Right. I'm going to list seven items and they'll tell me whether they're in order or not.
Is your question whether you're in the right portion of the ordinances?
Well, I want to know if, because I keep hearing that this body has to give reasons for referring it back. And I wanted to list these reasons to see if they were incompatible. So if I'm out of order?
No, you're not out of order, Alder, but just respectfully, we've been back and around the question of referral multiple times now. And I think staff has fairly clearly tried to communicate with all of you that referral is problematic.
And so let me take referral out. So I hear, and then correct me, is it said we must list or provide evidence that something was missing.
So, Dr. Bailey, can you post, put up the conditions again? Alder, I think this will address your underlying question. So on the screen there are your options with annotations about the findings. And perhaps, I don't know how hard this would be, Dr. Bailey, but is this PowerPoint in the record? Can Alders access it?
It is not at the moment. Can I send that to the clerk for you to post to Legistar?
Sure.
Okay.
And this information is also in the memo. So if you have Dr. Bailey's memo and you want to keep these, this before you without it being posted on the screen, that would be the place to look for it.
And the memo is in Legistar and, yeah, available there.
Thank you.
So a follow-up question. So listing the three reasons, and so, am I in order if I, let's see, where it says common counsel will need to specify how the commission should evaluate the project? And so at what point does that, do I input into number three? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
So Alder, if you wish to make a motion to refer, which again, staff have said would be problematic, we would have to wait until we're in discussion?
Okay. That's all right.
And make that motion and state the reasons for reevaluation?
Thank you. That's what I needed.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figueroa call.
I already forgot my question, to be honest with you.
I'm happy to move along, Alder.
About lots and things like that, but I'm like, I got this. So I really have no questions.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitterver, questions?
Yes. 1921 Candle Avenue is the directly adjoining lot to the north of the property in question. That frontage is 47 feet wide. Is that generally considered compatible with the proposed lot that is proposed to be 42 feet in width? That's for Dr. Bailey, sorry.
So, so yes, I believe it is. And Landmarks Commission also found that it was compatible.
So in other words, there is an adjoining lot that is compatible?
In size. Just to reiterate that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Kate, Dr. Kate, yeah, I'll just call you Dr. Kate. Attorney Smith, my question is, when we think about the record that we need to document for the evening, must we consider only what happened at Landmarks and the landmarks, the minutes essentially of Landmarks meeting and what was in the document realm at that time? Or may we also consider all of the documents that have come since then, including Dr. Bailey's memo, including your memo, et cetera? Is that all part of the record that we are to consider tonight? Or are we only to look at what happened at the Landmarks Commission meeting and, you know, and the minutes of that?
First of all, thank you. I do have a jurist doctorate and wouldn't attorneys even more obnoxious if we were called doctors. And yes, you can consider all of the materials presented to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Alder Latimer-Burris, additional questions?
Oh, yeah. My question was on what you've stated, Mayor, that the referral is problematic. And is that because of the April 7 Certified Survey Map? Is that the reason that it's problematic? So it either needs to be, you know, affirmed or, which is denying the appeal, or it needs to be denied and then, right? So you said, let me restate it clearly. You said that it seems like the referral is problematic. And I'm asking you, is the referral problematic because of the issues? Or is it problematic because April 7? I think that's the date. I don't have it in front of me.
Yes, Alder, that's correct.
The gun.
And to be clear, the attorney has said very clearly that you should not consider the CSM in your decision about the certificate of appropriateness. But it is a consideration in terms of the sort of larger question of whether you should take action tonight.
Right. So it goes to a larger question of if we should refer it back. So I'm trying to get clarity. And maybe you can clarify what you meant by referral is problematic.
That's what I meant, Alder.
Okay. So you could state that again so I make sure I hear everything that you're saying?
If you refer this back to Landmarks Commission, which to be clear, is a legal option for you, you are in a bind with respect to the Certified Survey Map. Because this body will not meet again before the statutory deadline. So you could be in a position, and I won't even speculate what this would mean, where under state law, you have an approved CSM, but you lack a certificate of appropriateness. And I will not speculate on where that puts us at all. But you could be, that could be the position that you find yourselves in.
So, and I guess this would be for the attorney.
Which would be problematic.
Yeah. I guess this is for the, I got that. The attorney is if we approve the appeal, which is, you know, basically denying Landmarks' decision, then does that wipe out the pending problem of April 7? So I don't.
No, Alder, we still have to take action on the CSM tonight, one way or the other.
Okay.
So what your action is becomes clearer?
Okay. So what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to make sure that the council does not get conflated or, you know, fearful of, you know, something that we can't consider but that really has consideration. I'm trying to ask the attorney, what's the clean way of either supporting the Landmarks Commission decision or not supporting it?
Doctor Smith?
All things considered.
So if you, so like, if you deny this, the certificate of appropriateness, then the CSM is dead. It can, it can't, you can't have the CSM without the COA under our ordinances. That being said, you, when you are articulating as a body that wanting to deny the CSM is the basis for which you are rejecting the Landmarks Commission decision to grant the COA, you are not acting according to law and are acting in a manner that is representative of your will and is, could be considered, the magic words that they say, unreasonable, arbitrary, and capricious, right? The fact of the matter is, is that the CSM is not in the, not in the appeal of the COA, which is the current parameters that you are existing in. So yes, it is all happening together, right? Like, but could we wish that they were not? But they can't be, they're not interchangeable with each other, right? Like, wanting something to happen or not happen with the CSM, trying to extend the deadline when the city does not have the authority to decide that on behalf of the applicant, all of those are not acting within the parameters of Chapter 41.
Thank you, Alder. I have no, other Alders in the queue for questions. So we find ourselves at the time for a motion. And again, we'll just remind us that what is before us is the appeal. So appropriate motions would be to deny the appeal or to sustain the appeal, or if you really wish to, to refer the question back to the Landmarks Commission. So it is not, we are not talking about the certificate, right? We're talking about the appeal. So motions should be framed with respect to the appeal. I don't know if these are questions or motions, but Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So approve the appeal and reverse or modify the decision of the Landmarks Commission. Now, do I give my stated reasons to support that?
Are you making a motion, Alder?
Yes, I'm moving.
So what is your motion?
My motion is to approve the appeal and reverse or modify the decision of the Landmark Commission. That's my motion.
All right. So let's start with that as the motion. And is there a second?
Second.
The motion is seconded by Alder Rommel. So the motion before us is to approve the appeal. Alder Harrington McKinney, if you would please speak to the motion and explain your findings.
Thank you. Number one, presumption of correctness, adjacent versus adjoining, clarity of terms. Two, definition of parcels. Three, legal lot size of record, clarification. Four, compatibility, clarification. Decision not based on standards, clarification. Five, certified map differential. Six, all information not considered. That's kind of vague.
I'm sorry, Alder, the finding needs to state why you believe the Landmarks Commission's decision was contrary to the standards in the ordinances. So it's not a, and please interrupt me, Attorney Smith, if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that it's a question of process. It's a question of the standards and that how you believe that their finding was contrary to the standards.
Could I use the content of some of the testimony that we heard tonight?
Yes. Anything that you heard tonight or anything that's in the public record is relevant.
And so that's what I, that's what I heard in the public record is the, there was a lack of clarity from, with the terms adjacent and adjoining. I heard that in the, that was part of the testimony. I heard also in the testimony, a question about the legal lots of record. So this is what I heard in the testimony. Am I in the area or am I not?
No, Alder, because it's in reference to the standards in the ordinances. So the finding has to be that the reason that you think that the Landmarks Commission did not follow the standards in the ordinances. So perhaps, Alder, if you want to work on that a minute, I just, for the body, we have to have a finding before we make a decision here. So let me move on to other Alders that are in the queue and see if we can get something. Alder Rommel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, we already have a motion on the floor, but I think I would at least know how to phrase what I think it should be. Should, does I have the?
If you want to add findings, I think that's appropriate.
I move that we approve the appeal and reverse the decision of the Landmarks Commission. The proposed lot division at 1908 Arlington Place, thank you, is incompatible with the applicable standards in MGO 41.18 for land combination division, which, and it fails to, it's incompatible with the adjacent lot sizes and fails to maintain the general lot size pattern of the historic district. The frontage of, the proposed lot two is 42 feet in width, a lot that is one-third smaller than the generally smallest lot surrounding it. That is not compatible. That's probably too wordy, but.
Thank you, Alder. Did you wish to speak to it further?
Yeah. So I think the issue here is that where it's easy to conflate a lot and a parcel. But if you look at the GIS information about the lots, they all range from 60 to 120 feet. And this proposed lot is 42 feet, which is, as I said, at least a third smaller than the range of 60 to 80, which is common surrounding it as shown. as shown in that map that I had Heather pull up before. I heard the Alder speak to the 1921 Kendall, but that's not a lot that's 40 feet. That's a parcel. And we're not looking at parcels. We're looking at lots. So the underlying lot for that parcel, I believe, is bigger than 40 feet. So this ordinance directs us to look at parcels. I mean, maybe some point should change and have us look at parcels, but it doesn't do that right now. And also, I want to, just, I don't really think the adjacency question is one I personally think needs to be pursued. I think even just taking the blocks surrounding and not across Arlington Place are sufficient to make the case that it's incompatible. The general, it fails, the adjacent lot sizes are incompatible based on the GIS maps for all the parcels surrounding adjacent, literally adjacent to it. I don't think we need to even go further. I mean, that seems like it's a court case that I'm not going to encourage at this point. Let somebody else do that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris on the motion?
Then we're like Alder Latimer-Burris, but I disagree with the contention that the language does not matter. During the, when we were having discussion at Landmarks Commission, I referred to Blacks Law Dictionary and to Legal Thesaurus, and it just didn't seem like, it seems like we were shaping the word in Chapter 28. And it also says in Chapter 28, correct me if I'm wrong, but it uses the word immediately and adjacent. So it's like, it's almost like it's emphasizing immediate and adjacent. Why would you do that if it was just adjacent meant something else? Immediate and adjacent. So I don't know how to phrase that into legalese that defines this correctly, but I can tell you that we're defining it more correctly than it got defined in Landmarks Commission. No disrespect to anybody. It's complicated. We move fast. There's a lot of information moving along, and these are legal issues. They become legal issues. So I don't know how to add that in, but I do think we should deal with language as well.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole?
I remember my question. So, because it was, thanks for putting that up. So I just get a little bit confused as where on this ordinance says, how are we, there's no unit of measure here when it talks about lot sizes. So it's not talking about dimensions or the perimeter. It could be talking about the area. So when I look at this and I see that, I mean, there's not a uniform pattern in this entire block whatsoever, I struggle with understanding this long discussion about trying to figure out how those words up on the screen, talking about lot sizes, don't, do not clearly represent the area that we are discussing right now. We're not talking about, it doesn't say if the parcel is, size is compatible or incompatible. It talks specifically about lot sizes. And we're talking, for example, a difference here of 206 square feet between the smallest side and this one. So that's what I was getting stuck earlier on the conversation about making assumptions on where, on how to determine a unit of measure that is not given here. It doesn't, definitely, I, this can go either way. You can say, you can go ahead and measure the perimeter and say it's not the same, but you can also go based on the square footage, which is what this map that someone presented includes here. So that was kind of not a question or whatever, because we really passed that, but that's what I'm, struggle to understand, how you will go against that language based on square foot, when it doesn't really tell you that either way is wrong or right.
Thank you, Alder. We'll take that as rhetorical. Alder? Yep, Alder Bennett?
Well, I might go further than rhetorical and ask if it's okay with the body if I ask Heather clarifying question.
Objection?
I know, we spend a lot of time on questions. So it's, is it, is it accurate to proceed with the findings and the motion that, that like, it's not, that the, yeah, the lot division is not consistent with the, with, I don't know, the adjoining, I now use the word adjoining, you know, lot sizes. I'll just stop there, let you answer.
Well, I mean, you have two staff reports from me that say otherwise. There are the platted lots, which have the 60-feet width or 120-foot width. That was the original plating. But we also have legal lots of record that are recorded in the deeds that have a variety of widths, and that was what was also used as part of the comparables.
Right, and so the motion only takes into account the platted lots of 60 feet, but you're saying that we must also consider the legal lots, which have a variety of sizes, correct?
That is what the, what Chapter 41 specifies, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, at this late hour, was trying to make sure I was making the right, but I will be honest, I am extremely confused following process and I trust, but I don't think I even heard a second, so I don't even know what motion that.
Yeah, so it was moved by Alder Harrington McKinney and seconded by Alder Rummel.
I thought Alder Rummel added amended language.
I'm sure Alder Harrington McKinney would be willing to second Alder Rummel's motion, but I was taking Alder Rummel's addition of findings as an addition to Alder Harrington McKinney's motion. Alder Rummel would like it to be a substitute, so is there a second for the motion? So we will reverse. Alder Rummel has moved, and Alder Harrington McKinney is second.
Okay, thank you.
But I do think, and the attorneys can interrupt me here, that the findings don't have to come in the motion, right? The findings are made by the body in your discussion. And so it is appropriate for anybody in the course of the discussion to add findings that contribute to the motion, if you wish to. I'm not hearing a contradiction, so I think that we're okay. So Alder Curry, do you have additional? No.
Additional?
Discussion, questions, clarifications?
I'm assuming with all the added language and the rationale behind the substitute amendment, basically, at the foundation, it's to accept the appeal.
Yes.
And, okay.
To approve the appeal.
We're good, thank you.
So, just in case, I didn't write down everything that Alder Rummel said, but the motion is to approve the appeal and find that the proposed action, so that the request of the property owner is incompatible with adjacent lot sizes and fails to maintain the general pattern of lot sizes in the area. So that's what's before us, is to approve the appeal. Alder Vitterver?
So first, I just want to recognize all of the effort that has gone into what the neighbors have put forward in the appeal. I'd also like to say that I've put in a lot of effort. I've engaged the neighbors in more than one public conversations about this concept. I've spoken with people individually. And so I think that I'm probably the most knowledgeable person on council about this issue, based on the work that I've done. Maybe I'm wrong. And I cannot agree with the appeal because I don't believe that that last piece of it, failing to maintain the general lot size pattern of the historic district, is upheld. Because the folks who are putting in the appeal are asking us to look solely at the properties on the hillside and not the district as a whole. And that is not a standard that the Landmarks Commission, to my knowledge, has ever used. And I'm going to read from the minutes from the Landmarks Commission meeting. Harris said that if they look at the general lot size pattern of the historic district, she thought the district had plenty of varying lots of varying sizes, and if these lots were to be divided, they would fit with the general pattern of the historic district. Morrison said that after seeing the map of the historic district, it clarified that neither lot would end up being an oddball. Not only does the new lot meet zoning criteria and would be a similar size to other lots, but it leaves the old lot as a similar size and meeting zoning criteria. So my concern here is that we have a record that clearly justifies the Landmarks Commission finding that it is compatible with maintaining general lot size patterns in the historic district, and therefore, based on our counsel, our legal counsel, which is the city attorney's office, that it is not appropriate for us to uphold the appeal. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris?
So just following up.
For the second time, Alder.
Thank you. Just following up what Alder Vitterver said. Then that brings us back to the issue of adjacency and why that becomes irrelevant. So immediate adjacency. This is very complex, and I don't agree that you've talked to your neighbors, but here we are with more information, and it's like you got to consider one thing and not exclude the other thing. So if you don't, if you want to go with your argument.
Alder, please address the chair.
Yeah, so if you want to go, if my colleague wants to go with that argument, then we get into, we get back to language. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
I just wanted to second what my colleague, well, both of you are to the left of me. So the one closer to the left.
Your colleague from the fifth.
My colleague from the fifth. It's, you know, it's 10:11 on a Tuesday. And, yeah, I'm turning into a whole adult. But I believe that the motion wrongfully, and unfortunately, does not consider the both, the platted and the legal definitions of lot sizes, which are more clearly defined in the staff reports. And once considered, it clearly shows that while, like, one only has, like, you know, the 60 feet of length, others, the legal definition has numerous different lot sizes baked into it. And Alder, my Alder Vitterver brought in some interesting points that she could only have come up with as the Alder of the district and someone that has spent a lot of time and energy on this matter. So I do not want to knock her efforts in that regard, even if it may not support what residents are, the residents that have made the effort to come here today to say. So, and then as a matter of adjacency, I think that it comes up 130 times in our ordinances, all of which connotate that they mean adjacent, meaning adjoining and not neighboring. That says a lot. And while I understand that we cannot consider the implications of what it would mean for us to suddenly, at 10:13 on a Tuesday, decide that adjacency means neighboring and not adjoining, I lost my train of thought. But I think that, at the end of the day, it's very clearly baked into our Madison general ordinances. And I would not want to go against that precedent. And so, all that being said, I will not be supporting the appeal nor the motion. And I wanted to offer that I understand that, and I'm not going to sit here and call anybody a NMB, though I think it's important to recognize when some of the arguments that we're hearing today sound awfully familiar to those that we hear almost every council meeting. And I understand that errors are made, but 130 times in our Madison general ordinances says otherwise. And it's hard for me to find an error made in this one instance when it's very clearly defined in our ordinances. Thus, it leads me to look to the future of what will be here. And I struggle to see how we can have more productive conversations about meeting our housing needs at this time when we have neighborhood battles over simple infill developments. And having to, having to very clearly and articulately say how much neighbors are contributing to the community, whilst also being very vocal against a simple lot division brings great concern to me. And I would encourage us to think that when we discuss the character of a neighborhood, we think to whom the character is benefiting. I would not say it's benefiting a majority of the citizens of Madison, that this neighborhood is quite exclusionary in nature. When was the last time that there's been historic tours in this area? Or opportunities to engage? All the time, well, okay. Regardless, who does those serve? No, seriously, who does those serve?
Alder, we might stay close to the standards in our conversation.
In the standards, I think that, at the end of the day, my point being is that we've sat here and spent hours on end on a single issue when there are numerous other housing issues facing the city of Madison, which I would love to tackle, and yet, we're having neighborhood battles over simple lot divisions. So I understand having a great sense of pride over a neighborhood, yet I would also encourage us to be open and welcoming to new neighbors, to experience the benefits of the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I'd just like to remind the council that you're acting as a quasi-judicial body and that your comments tonight go into the record of the findings. And so it is probably prudent for you to stay very close to the question of the standards and not introduce, I'm going to try and quote Dr. Smith, arbitrary and capricious arguments into the conversation. It's a fairly straightforward standard, and we should, that is what we should be talking about tonight. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Mayor. I have been confused throughout this whole process, but I think that where I'm at is, and I think where this council is also getting a little confused is, we need to have the reasoning before we have that outcome. We, as a political body, typically have our vote decided ahead of time, and we know what the outcome is going to be. And sometimes we look for that reasoning. And as a quasi-judicial body, I don't think we can do that this time. That being said, after Alder Vitterver's comments, I went to Madison Open Data, and you guys will be receiving an email soon. And I was able to send, find a screenshot of all of the lot sizes in this historical districts that are less than 4,500 square feet, and there are tons. So that screenshot will be hitting everyone's email in this room. And I think it really just adds to the argument that this is not, there's that slideshow. pulled up earlier with the highlighted text, that last sentence saying that, actually, I don't know what it says. Can someone pull that up? But the point of it was, the metric says that this, there are lots smaller than 4,500 feet, very similar to this. And I was, there's actually a lot that are less than 4,000 feet. I did not attach that screenshot, but I can next time. So, I don't think that approving this appeal is the right thing to do because we have seen that within this historical district, there are, there is evidence that there are smaller lots this size, one, just a couple, just a couple, one block away. So, now you guys are able to visualize it, which personally helps me. I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate all the evidence that's been put forth before this quasi-judicial body to consider. I do want to say that I do not share any negative opinion of any of the appellants. And if there have been any aspersions in social media or any of my colleagues against their character or their motivation, I do not share them. And I appreciate to no end the contributions of many of the appellants to our community. However, that's not particularly relevant to the legal issues at hand. I will not be supporting the appeal because I, and I won't be supporting the motion because I think the motion confuses the original lot lines with the legal lot evolution of these lines, how they've evolved over time, the legal lot lines. And to me, it seems like the motion leans into some kind of originalism and says that we need to make comparison based on how these lots were defined at the time they were initially set up, rather than seeing how the neighborhood and terms of the lot lines have evolved over time. And how they've evolved over time is a pragmatic and important consideration for this body. And I believe that Landmarks Commission used that information in making a reasonable judgment that this lot subdivision or this division would not be incompatible with adjacent lots. And these lots may be different than the original lots way back when it was plotted, just as my particular legal lot, if I look at my deed, it's going to say it's portions of this lot, and portions of that, and portions of another. Remember when Dr. Bailey said, in this particular legal lot definition, it includes portions of Lot 8, Lot 9, and Lot 10? So if we can't get into an originalism argument saying that this lot, this new parcel, if subdivided, is incompatible with the original lot on the other side, or the 60 and 120, which is the original lot definitions, we need to look at how they've evolved over time. And so while I don't share in any aspersions to the character of the appellants, I do not believe or subscribe to the hyper belief that's been used, that if this subdivision goes through, that it will destroy the adjoining properties, that it will destroy, as some of the testimony and public comments that were emailed to all Alders, that it would destroy three properties in particular. I don't believe that that is true. So, I will not be supporting this motion, and I would encourage you to vote it down, and that then we can entertain a new motion denying the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Hange-McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be supporting the appeal. And I want to put forward, and thank you, Madam Chair, for correcting, NIMBY is always in the mix, one. Secondly, is that the infill for new construction and our challenges for housing, absolutely. But what I was looking at is the character and the history of the presenters tonight and their testimony. And in that testimony, I heard incompatibility. I heard all information was not considered. So that left for me still questioning whether the Landmark Commission had all the information that they needed to make an informed decision. I am supporting the appeal, and I'll still support the appeal. I recognize the Alder of the district knowing the district, and I'm assuming that she's had that conversation with many of the residents and also those who came to testify tonight. But I will be supporting the appeal because, as I read through all the documentation, the term compatibility, incapability, there were still many questions that I had, and if those questions could have been, and that's what I heard the ask for, is for the commission to listen to information that they thought was not considered. And so, I'm looking at that information that they thought was not considered, and I am going to support the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak, anticipating disagreement. We'll have a roll call. So just again, to clarify what is in front of us, the motion is to approve the appeal and finding that the Landmarks Commission action to issue the certificate of appropriateness was incompatible with the adjacent lot sizes and fails to maintain the general pattern of lot size in the area. And so practically, if you approve the appeal, the applicant will not be able to subdivide their lot, and we will have to move on to the CSM to deny the certified survey map. Is everybody clear? Okay. So, all those in favor of approving the appeal, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. President Curry?
No.
No. Alder Duncan?
No.
No. Alder Evers?
No.
No. Alder Field is excused. Vice President Figaro Cole?
No.
No. Alder Govindarajan?
No.
No. Alder Ugher?
No.
No. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Knox is excused. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yes.
Aye. Alder Madison?
No.
No. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
No.
Alder Mayadze?
Yes.
Yes. Alder Rommel?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Tichler is excused. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Vitiver?
No.
No. Alder Weheli?
No.
No. Alder Bennett?
No.
No. Alder Conklin?
No.
No. Madam Mayor, I have five ayes and 12 nos. Thank you. With five ayes, the motion fails. We are back in need of a motion, and I might suggest that the opposite motion be made. Unlike an ordinance or resolution, the negative vote doesn't, it's insufficient. We need to actually have an affirmative vote on an action. So, we'd entertain a motion. Alder Ugher, I think you were first.
A motion to deny the appeal. That's all that's necessary.
A motion to deny the appeal. Is there a second? It's moved and seconded. Do you think findings are still appropriate?
If I then can amend my motion, that based on the findings here, that the Landmark Commission appropriately followed the applicable ordinance.
Standards in the ordinance.
Standards.
Followed the standards in the ordinance.
Yes.
Thank you, Alder. Do you wish to speak to the motion?
No, I think it's simple enough after the discussion we've had.
Thank you, Alder. Appreciate brevity. Alder Vitiver on the motion?
Just wanted to see if it was appropriate to amend the motion to say that, based on the Landmarks Commission ruling, as well as the entirety of the record that has been brought before us, that it is appropriate to deny the appeal.
Would it be acceptable to deny?
Right, so just as a reminder, amendments are not friendly unless they're friendly to the body. But again, in this case, the motion stands. We'll take Alder Vitiver's comment as a portion of the findings in this case. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yeah, I'm not going to support this. I think that one of the points I wanted to say was that this is a historic district, so the rules are totally different. When we say we base it on the record and the record that we find tonight, you're not pointing to, you know, this is what was said, here's how it differs, and this is what it says. We're just doing a circular argument. And I think that's probably part of the problem with the way that we are doing business, is it becomes a circular argument, and you can't get out of it until it goes further. So, this is a historic district, and the Landmarks Commission is there to take a long look at things, and when they're disputed, when you get a lot of evidence, just to, you know, recycle the evidence doesn't do anything but recycle the issue. So, I'm not going to be supporting it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
I think that's a fair point, honestly. Just because this discussion has been so confusing, that's hard to keep up with the evidence in a way. So, the way I've been looking at this in a very simple manner is, the petitioners made a claim that lot sizes 4,500 square feet and lower are not normal for this historical district. I think we can, as a body, agree that that's what the claim was made. And then the evidence that was presented in this open map that I sent out, and also everywhere else that's public, is there are, on my screen and the screenshots that I posted, at least a dozen, maybe two dozen, in just this portion of the historical district that are under 4,500, and there's even more that are less than 4,000 square feet. So I think the evidence is very clear, it is very present, and I think in a quasi-judicial form, manner, I feel confident in saying that the claim that was made has been proven wrong. So with that being said, I think it is right to deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Weheli?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it appropriate to make an amendment?
You can certainly add to the findings.
Because we had, like, three choices. One is to refer, and I'm wondering if I can borrow Alder Vitiver's original comment, where it says we can approve conditionally to refer to the landmark on April 5th.
So Alder, that would be a separate motion. I think we should dispense with the motion that's before us. And if the motion fails, then we could, we would be left solely with the option to refer, I think, unless somebody wanted to reconsider something.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. So what's before us is the motion to deny the appeal and find that the Landmarks Commission followed the standards in the ordinance. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. President Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Field is excused. Vice President Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Ugher?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
No. Alder Knox is excused. Alder Latimer-Burris?
No.
No. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Mayadze?
No.
No. Alder Rommel?
No.
No. Alder Tichler is excused. Alder Revere?
No.
No. Alder Vitiver?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Weheli?
No.
No. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Mayor, I have 11 ayes and 6 nos. With 11 ayes, the motion passes. May I suggest that at this time, we take up item 103, which is the related CSM? Is there any objection? Seeing no objection on item 103, sorry, let me shuffle papers here to actually redo the Legislaw number. Item 103 is Legislaw 81560, approving a certified survey map of property owned at 1908 Arlington Place, owned by 1908 Arlington Place LLC, located at 1908 Arlington Place in the University Heights Historic District. On item 103, President Curry, a motion, please.
Moved to adopt under suspension.
Moved and seconded to adopt under suspension. Reminder that item 103 requires 14 votes. Is there, are there questions on item 103? Seeing no questions, is there discussion on item 103? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 103? Alder Rommel?
I don't support. I would vote no. So I would like a roll call.
A roll call has been requested on item 103, so all those in favor of the motion to adopt, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and Alder Latimer-Burris, were you objecting as well?
Sorry.
Thank you. Alder, Alder Figaro Cole?
Just to be level here, if this doesn't pass, I mean, I know that we had this discussion before. What is the-
So we are now in the position of taking action on the CSM. Right? So by taking this vote, we will have taken, please, some lawyer stop me if I'm wrong. But by taking this vote, you will meet the standards at the state level, that this body has to take action within a certain amount of time. If you approve the certified survey map, the applicant can move forward. If you do not approve it, the applicant cannot move forward to divide the lot.
And so, does the applicant have any options after that? Can they come back to?
I think that might be a question for Attorney Smith. What rights does the applicant have to appeal on a CSM?
That's a great question, and I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I can look in the subdivision regulations really quick.
Does anybody at the back of the room know?
And do we need some, do we need some specific reason to deny this, or we can just say no because?
Are there particular standards with relationship to CSM's, Attorney Smith?
Um, there are.
Staff are looking things up.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but an elucidation of said standards might be useful to the council at this point in time.
Yes, I'm trying to find the section of 1623, which is a behemoth of an ordinance. And also, I think-
Dr. Bailey may have you here.
The applicant would be able to appeal to Circuit Court within 30 days.
So, one question is answered. The applicant has the right of appeal within 30 days to the Circuit Court. And then the second question on the standards of the approval of a CSM. And then the second question on the standards of the approval of a CSM?
Sorry, I was so focused on that question, I wasn't...
That's okay. We have interim Planning Division Director Bill Frühling, who has been with us all night. And congratulations on your interim position.
Thank you. So the question... The question is about standards for...
For the approval of a CSM.
There really are no standards for the approval of the CSM. It's usually done under suspension of the rules. It's introduced, enacted on, and there are no standards. But it gives particularly other agencies to put comments on the land division, like for stormwater, you know, any stormwater requirements, any sewer requirements, other conditions. The CSM before you has, I don't know, 20-some conditions attached to it. And, you know, everything is minimal as make this line darker where the fence is because we can't see it on the plat, to change this label on the plat. So it's really an opportunity to put conditions on the division of the land and make it clear they have to pay park fees and do things that are necessary to have it recorded.
Thank you. Attorney Haas?
Thank you. Kate can correct me if I'm wrong, but I also thought that the CSM is more technical standards. Does the lot conform with the lot sizes? The required lot sizes, setbacks, things like that? My understanding was that if the CSM meets those standards, generally the applicant is entitled to approve.
That's what I thought.
Otherwise, we have to point to things in the requirements that the CSM does not meet. And if we cannot point to things in the ordinances or statutes that the CSM does not comply with, then that, and the CSM is denied, then it's going to be difficult to defend that if we get into court.
Thank you, Attorney Haas.
Thank you. We had this conversation before, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers, is it a question?
No, are we in discussion?
We are now. The motion is to approve.
Yeah. I encourage my colleagues to vote for this, even if you voted against the denial of the appeal, for the following reasons. We've gone through a process here, a political process, a democratic process. You may be opposed to the outcome. It didn't work out the way you want it. But right now, we have a technical decision before us. To vote against the CSM because you did not prevail in the political process would be a failure of our individual responsibility here. The order of the district, staff, the commission, and the votes of this body move this ahead. Let go of your disagreement. I would encourage, Mayor, that my colleagues would let go of their disagreement with that and stick to the technical definitions that were just offered by Attorney Haas. If you have a reason to vote against this, you need to speak about the technical aspects of the CSM that do not comport with the standards. It is simply not sufficient to rely upon the idea that you disagreed with the vote on the appeal. So please stick to our business. Please look at this honestly. Look at this in terms of the legal definition of a CSM and don't get caught up in sour grapes because you did not prevail in this political process. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Well, I'll have to disagree with my colleague. It's not political. We're trying to make educated decisions. And if we do not agree that the standards were met, if we do not agree that the Landmark Commission made a proper record of why, you know, the two different types of plots that were considered and then different maps that were considered and the definition of adjacent, for my colleague to say that we're just sour grapes is... It's not appropriate. Because if you don't agree with it, and I sat through Landmarks Commission and I also sat through this. I did not get to get over there. But I didn't base my decision on politics, NIMBYism, or political aptitude. I based my decision on the facts and the law. So that's what I encourage my colleagues to do, is don't vote on sour grapes. Vote on what, the reason that you supported or did not support the appeal in the first place. It's not fair what he's saying, is what I'm saying.
Thank you, Alder. I just would like to remind the body that what's before us is no longer the certificate of appropriateness or the appeal thereof. What's before us is the certified survey map, which has its own set of standards that are different from the certificate of appropriateness and, in fact, not at all related. So the standards that are before us are related to the certified survey map. And that is what we should be discussing at this point in time. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your last comments. I don't disagree. But I did raise my hand after Alder Evers. So I wanted to say, I know we're in a quasi-judicial setting. It's not a political setting. And I just, I don't support the... I don't think it meets the standards based on the underlying laws that created the lot division. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I'm going to pause us here because Attorney Smith has something to add.
I just want... So you are no longer acting in a quasi-judicial capacity when you're reviewing the CSM. That was for the appeal of the Landmarks Commission COA. And I would guide all of you to the Planning Division Staff Report, which is attached to Legislaw File 81560. So for this, for the CSM, in which the Planning Division Staff, prepared by Tim Parks here, lays out the background information for the CSM, the zoning summary, all of those, when we're talking about the technical pieces, all of that is laid out in the... I'm sorry, the planning report staff that's attached to this. We are talking about a completely different issue than the COA. And it has, I believe, always been kind of the past practices of the council, you know, upon the advice of our office or just past practices, that the materials in the staff report that outline that whether or not the standards of the CSM have been met are those technical aspects that you're looking for. So there's a whole planning report that discusses all of the particulars, but none of this is the same thing as the COA standards as has been articulated by the mayor and other people as well.
Thank you, Attorney Smith. Alder Evers, for the second time.
All right. No, I'll take my name out of the queue.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. What's before us is a motion to approve a certified survey map. It does require 14 votes. A roll call had been requested. So all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll.
President Curry? Aye. Alder Duncan? Aye. Alder Evers? Aye. Alder Field is excused. Vice President Figueroa Cole? Aye. Alder Govindarajan? Aye. Alder Uguere? Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney? No. Alder Knox is excused. Alder Latimer-Burris? No. Alder Madison? Aye. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Marazzi? No. Alder Rommel? No. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere? Aye. Alder Vitiver? Aye. Alder Wihili? Aye. Alder Bennett? Aye. Alder Conklin? Aye. Madam Mayor, I have 13 ayes and 4 noes.
The 13 ayes, the certified survey map is not approved. And that will take us to item 6, which is Legislaw 81952, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances to allow accessory dwelling units for properties with up to eight dwelling units and remove owner occupancy requirements for ADUs. On item 6, President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to re-refer to the Plan Commission?
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to re-refer to the Plan Commission. It was separated. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions?
No, it was referred.
I'm sorry?
When I separated it, I did not realize that it had been referred.
Well, it will be referred if you all vote in the affirmative tonight. But that is the intention, is for referral. Right? I have no other Alders in the queue. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing no objection, item 6 is re-referred. And that will take us to item 64. Item 64 is Legislaw 82280, authorizing a non-competitive contract for purchase of services, architect for the public market. On item 64, President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adopt. On item 64, are there questions? Alder Harrington McKinney?
I have a question of staff. Could they just say more about this particular item, just for clarification?
Brian Cooper is here from Facilities. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor. Or I guess it's late night at this point. The resolution is for a contract with the architect and engineer team for the Madison Public Market. The project contract, the original contract started in 2019. At that point, we put an expiration date of the end of 2022. Somewhere in 2023, very late 2023, we were told the contract expired and we had just missed that it had expired. So our friends in the purchasing department recommended that we submit a non-competitive bid application and in order to complete the scope that was in the original contract. And at the same time, there were some added, or excuse me, extra service requests by the architect-engineer team. So what is happening in this resolution is we're, A, capturing a new contract... Sorry, we're starting a new contract to capture the work that was never completed as part of the original contract, as well as adding the extra services that we negotiated with the architect-engineer team over the last few months to finish out the remaining parts of the contract.
Follow-up question. And so the first part of it is that the contract had expired and then there was some additional... Could you say more about that? I don't want to put words. I want to be very clear that I heard the additional part.
Yeah, there's extra service. There was extra services requests towards the end of last year. This... Would you like to know, are you asking what sort of items were included in that?
I am asking that.
Yeah. Okay, well, the large majority of that is related to the increase in labor costs for the architects and the engineer teams that are part of that contract. I'm not sure how closely you followed the market project, but it had a lot of twists and turns from probably about 2020 all the way through 2023, when it went to bidding due to the pandemic and also a variety of kind of related inflationary issues. So during that period, the labor rates had changed quite a bit from when the contract was supposed to be originally completed to when it actually will be completed. So those are captured. And that's primarily the extra services request. There's some related, more, I would call it more minor to the request, some changes associated with the design and restarting and stopping and restarting the design and some just related elements to just extra scope that was added due to some of the time lapse.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you, Brian. Are there any additional questions? Seeing no additional questions, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 64? Seeing no objection, we record a unanimous vote and item 64 will pass. That will take us to item 81. Item 81 is Legislaw 81911, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances related to the composition of the Common Council Executive Committee. On item 81, President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to place on file.
Moved and seconded to place on file. Are there questions on item 81? Alder Wihili?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to ask a question to Karen.
Okay, go ahead.
She can talk about the process of the interview process from the time we select the president and the vice president to when we establish the CCEC committee.
Thank you. So the interview process in both cases that it was carried out, which was, I believe, this current administration and the one preceding it, those were carried out by the president and vice president independently of my involvement. But one thing I think that's important to raise is, I believe it came up in the CCEC discussion, is the amount of time that it has, it tends to take to... Between when we elect leadership or when y'all elect leadership and when CCEC can get scheduled. And I've, without looking back at my, you know, I would have to look back at the notes to see when we started. But there is a delay, any delay that, you know, anything extra that we add in, of course, does potentially cause a delay. And I definitely am in favor of a brisk process of scheduling and getting CCEC back up and running. I certainly think that it's a very helpful forum, at least for me and my office, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers, questions?
Yes, Mayor. Karen, you mentioned that this, I think that this interview process was the choice of the leadership team. It was not a requirement, correct?
That is correct.
So it is, it's something that the past two presidents chose to do, but previous presidents, in my recollection, have not. Would that sound accurate?
Yes, I think you and I probably have very similar time spans at the city and that's also my recollection in the last five years, yes.
So it's entirely possible for a council-elected leadership to have a more expedited process if they chose to do so, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. It's been moved and seconded to place on file. Is there discussion? Alder Wihili?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So I put forward this resolution because of equity and opportunity. I'm bringing this ordinance because the change of the... It will be... I'm bringing this ordinance because the change of the, it will be, it will expedite the process of selecting the CEC committee. And also, it will create participation from the larger body in terms of the diversity of opinion. Like, we have talked about, there's, you know, the committees are selected in a different, in a way that's more not inclusive or equitable. However, if this item does not pass, I will really request the leadership not to engage in a longer process, but also interview process that can drag the process. When we elect the president and the vice president on the day, let's, for example, April 16th, I hope we can have the CEC committee selected the same week. Like Karen said, there's a lag of time that we don't have CEC for almost 45 days. And also, the questions or the interview, sometimes it's very intimidating to some of the Alders. I'm not speaking for them, but they have very unpleasant experience from the past. So making sure that the questions or the interview is more conducive and more appropriate in asking the Alders, because we are peers and we are elected officials, we're not looking for a job. So I hope the new leadership, whoever they are, you know, to consider to be more inclusive in selecting the CEC, but also expedite the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to comment and share that this proposal reminds me of some failed proposals before us that we're trying to kind of achieve the same thing, whether it's efficiency or inclusivity. And so one I think of is the proposed ordinance change to limit the amount of times Alders were speaking or how many times they could ask questions. And I think in both of those scenarios, the body pretty unanimously, majority spoke and said that we have been elected and trusted to do our job. And I would say that this situation is similar in the fact that all of the council has to vote, a majority will vote in who our next council president and vice president will be. Even in my colleague from the 7th District's comments about an interview process, my colleague in the 13th District said that there doesn't, there doesn't need to be one. So again, remember, reminding folks that we are all, what's the word? It's late. We are, as council members, we are all members of committees, whether appointed or not, and can engage and attend those. And so I think there's been a lot of productive conversations that have happened in the last, I'd say, three, four CECs that folks can go back and watch recordings. But I would encourage my peers to not vote for this and trust that our upcoming leadership election, whoever is running for those, they are taking heed of the feedback that has been provided. And again, that our colleagues will trust that the trust we put into our council leadership will allow for a process that is as fair and brief as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. On item 81, the motion is to place on file. Is there Alder Weheli?
Not for me, thank you. I'll be voting no for.
We'll record Alder Weheli, he is voting no. With that caveat, is there? I'm just going to do a roll call. So the motion is to place on file. All those in favor of placing on file, aye. Those opposed, no. And the clerk will please call the roll.
President Curry?
Absolutely aye.
Aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Field is excused. Vice President Figaroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Ughair?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
No. Alder Knox is excused. Alder Latimer Burris?
No.
No. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Mayadze? No. Alder Rommel? No. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Videvir?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Weheli?
No.
No. Alder Bennett? Aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Mayor, I have 12 ayes and 5 noes.
With 12 ayes, item 81 will pass. That will take us to item 101, which is Legisstar 82371, authorizing the execution of a development agreement and funding appropriation for a tax increment finance loan to East Washington Apartments LLC regarding development at 808 Melvin Court in the 3100 block of East Washington Avenue. On item 101, President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions for staff on item 101? Seeing no questions for staff, is there discussion? Alder Rommel, discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this off the agenda. I assume probably most of you may support this, but I just want to let you know why I'm not going to support this. I guess I'm going to start with a question I'm going to ask you all. Do you think the city should be promoting and funding affordable housing in an area where there are identified significant and adverse health impacts for children and residents who are low income? That's the question I think is before you. And almost four years ago, I co-sponsored a resolution opposed to the selection of TruX Field for the bed down of F-35s that was adopted by the entire council in March of 2020. I still believe that the significant adverse impacts identified in the Air National Guard's environmental impact statement disproportionately affect children, residents who are low income, and people of color. And they are contrary to the city's visions and values of equity, sustainability, health, and adaptability as codified in our comprehensive plan. The city's racial equity and social justice initiative undermines multiple long-term goals of city policymakers. The site is under the flight path for the airport's main runway and within the 65 decibel DNL range identified in the Dane County Airport F-35 noise contour map. The county has been recently updating this map, and it's the first time in over 30 years. And it confirms that by 2027, the Air National Guard 115 Fighter Wing and other airport operations will put about 2,200 people across 1,100 residences under the average daily exposures of 65 to 75 decibels. You know, the airport is encouraging the military to change flight patterns, and that may help some. But the point is that it's an environmental justice question. And then, that I don't personally believe can be balanced by the fact that we need affordable housing. So I will not be supporting this motion, and I just want to have people go on the record to at least think about how are we going to move forward now that the county is proposing this map, which says that it's not compatible with residential, you know, these noises are not compatible for residential uses. So at some point, that is going through a process that will eventually end up at the FAA level. They will have a period where they take comments about it, and eventually, if they approve the county proposal, it will come back as policy, and then they'll initiate the opportunity to raise funds for remediation. But at some point, I think that this question of how are we going to deal with this noise at TruX or that 115 Fighter Wing and F-35s is coming home. People are in pain. I hope you all know there is pain. People are in pain. It hurts, you can't go outside. So I understand the developer will, has funds from HUD to remediate, you know, insulate the building so that it's 45 decibels inside. Fine, that's great. Don't go outside then. Don't have kids that want to play outside. And at some point, you can't open your window at certain times a day, four times a day that the flights come and go every single day, four days a week. And there's only eight flights, eight planes now, soon we'll have 20. So it's only going to get worse. And the money to fix things is way, 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 way out there. And I know the answer, I think, is to ask the 115 Fighter Wing to change its mission. I know there's not this social will, the political will to make that happen, but that's really the answer. And I know we don't have the power over that, and you're going to say, oh, we don't have power, we need housing. I guess that's your decision, but I just want you to know, I can't put, you know, city money. I didn't support it at the land use level either, so. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris?
Yeah, so I am sponsoring this, and I am going to vote against it because, as a statement, I don't like the process that it went through. The neighborhood is not being listened to about sidewalks, parking, noise. And I don't see how we can, you know, hand out money as a city and we don't take them into consideration. Now, we can get real technical, because I have spent, I did triage what happened, and because of the way we've changed our ordinances, you know, where we can put up buildings without parking. I've talked to my colleague, who said it's theoretically impossible because no bank would approve it. She'll know that I listened to what she said. But nonetheless, we should involve the neighborhood. This is Madison. This is not one person's agenda, 10 people's agenda. The constituents, my constituents, a year before I got on the council, had brought up a lot of issues around sidewalks, who's paying for those, safety, parking, noise, including the F-35s, which we know is a long-term problem. And some of the developments are addressing it. It is loud, I do live right down the street, like three or four houses down from this, so there's no way it's even at 65 decibels. But that's the reason that I'm going to vote no, is because I want to highlight the exclusion, how we exclude the neighborhood. And I don't think that's a good thing. I think we got to get feedback, deal with the problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you. Are there staff available to address these concerns at all?
There are, in fact, Alder.
I don't know who it would be, but anyone, please go ahead. Thank you.
Our economic development director is here.
Alder, can you be more specific on which concerns you want addressed?
Yes. The environmental injustice part, the fact that the county might make a map that this might not be suitable for residences. This, I haven't heard this concern before, I don't have much context regarding this, so anything helps.
Sure. So I think there's, you know, really two issues at play here. One is a land use issue, and the other is the tax increment financing issue. This project went through the development review process and was already received its land use approvals. And this evening, we're looking at it from a tax increment financing perspective. As was alluded to, the developer has incorporated mitigation measures consistent with what the recommendations of the county report are, assuming it's adopted, that would reduce the noise levels on the inside of the building. Those mitigation items in part contribute to the financial gap of the project, which is why, as staff has identified in the TIF memo, it is certainly, but four can be justified, and as a result, we're recommending financing this evening.
Got it. So this is more so about the financing and not the actual building, the project, correct?
Yes, this item before you this evening, yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue, Alder Bennett?
Yeah, my button wasn't buttoning. And so just to that last point, Matt, sorry, I wanted to call you.
Director Michelajewski.
Director Michelajewski, sorry. Yeah, official terms. Without allocating this TIF funding, can you make it clear, like, the project is still approved? Like, not giving TIF money does not stop the project. It would just maybe inhibit its affordability, is that right? Potentially?
Yes, so that's a good question, Alder. The, you know, we have identified that there's a financial gap with the project, which is why we're recommending the approval of this TIF support. It is possible that if the council were to deny the use of, the investment of TIF into this project, it is possible that the developer could find another way to move forward with the project. But it is also possible that the developer could not find a way to move forward, because again, we, as indicated in the memo, have identified that there is a true financial gap in this project.
Thank you. And I just want to take the time to share my support for this.
Questions, Alder?
Oh, I'm sorry, we were flipping in between questions and.
I think, Alder Figaroa Cole, do you have a question?
Never mind. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
We'll come back to you, Alder Bennett. Alder Figaroa Cole?
Thank you. So I think I heard you say that part of the trouble is because of the additional materials that are soundproofed. Did I misunderstand?
In part, we don't, when we underwrite a TIF application, we look at the project holistically in terms of both the sources and uses of the funds. In this case, the developer is using materials that increase the cost of the project because they go above and beyond what you might build, you know, somewhere out in a rural area, for example. But we can't specifically tie the specific amount of TIF support to those specific items because we look at it as a project as a whole.
And we don't have anything on the ordinances to combat the the noise, you know, to demand any additional relief or building materials against the noise. So by, I mean, I feel like we have other developments in the area that we have worked closely with the developer to ensure that even though we don't have control over the path of the, of the flight path that creates all this noise, that the minimum that we can do is to try to get them to put noise blocking whatever materials. And it sounds to me like this is one of those instances. Is that correct? Like, they don't have to do that, there's no law that forces them to do that.
There is not a general rule that I'm aware of, and Bill, please correct me if I'm wrong, but there's not a general rule that I'm aware of that would require a developer to do a certain amount of materials as part of a project.
So we want them to do the right thing, and again, if they, if we don't, like you said, if we don't approve this, there's no guarantee that they're not going to find the funding elsewhere. They can also cut back on things like noise cancellation to meet their financial needs, I suppose.
Yes, but potentially be the case.
Yeah. I mean, I understand, oh, no, we're not in comments.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
Alder Weheli, questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So Matt, when you said there's a financial gap, does that include the 1.7 million tax increment finance loan, or that's in addition to what the finance, the finance loan?
So this project has an affordability component to it, which there's several reasons why affordable housing projects typically have a financial gap. Their financial gap actually is, could be justified as even larger than the amount that we are investing in TIF, but we are staying within the TIF policy. There are the other ways that a developer can address a financial gap when they're building an affordable housing project. So I don't know if that helped or confused things, but, but the gap is certainly at a minimum the amount that we're providing via TIF.
And what are the other ways that you said that they can be able to go by?
A developer, an affordable housing project can, for example, defer some of their fee. They can make other adjustments to their financing that enable them to move forward with the project, even though it perhaps has a financial gap.
Thank you. And one more question is, has there been any environmental scan in this particular area in term of the, and I know you said, you know, they cannot be able to do noise counseling, but other, you know, within the area, any environmental scan that might be harmful to the future residents?
I am not aware of it. I'm not saying that there hasn't been one, but I'm not aware, perhaps in the land use process, there was something, but I just don't know.
Thank you.
I have no other Alders in the queue with questions? Is there discussion? Seeing no, oh, all of a sudden, there is. Alder Curry, discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know it's late, but I remembered seeing a memo and so just want to put a plug to Alders that we were emailed a memo regarding the sound mitigation strategies that are broken down by Bear Developments LLC. And part of that is when the community determines residential use is allowable within the 65 or decibel range, 65 and upwards, that measures to achieve outdoor to indoor noise level reduction of at least 25 decibels and 30 decibels should be incorporated into building codes. I mean, I know it's a memo and not necessarily a promise, but it also is a, not that there isn't concern about putting housing within this flight zone, but also leveraging or understanding the fact that these will be affordable units and kind of similar to other developments, I think, at the Bimbo Bakery, our housing crisis and affordable housing crisis being so terrible that some folks who are in desperate situations would make that choice, knowing that they're in a flight zone with the noise. But I feel okay moving forward, supporting the $10 to support this development based on at least some of the ish typed things. I don't want to say assurances because it's hypothetical, but the assurances that we have to date without the development being there and also knowing that we could possibly make change to that in the future if needed. So I plan to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Mayor. I also will be supporting this. I am hesitant about it just because of, again, a lot of the concerns raised by Alder Rommel. But seeing that this project is likely to go forward one way or another, I would much rather it include some affordability aspect. I would much rather it, the money, the TIF money being used for some kind of prevention, safety methods with the sounds. I think that just makes sense to me. I am generally concerned with the new fighter jets going on, the increased sound and everything nearby there. I am concerned if the county declares that as like a non-residential area, whatever it might have been. But this just seems like the right thing to do in this situation, so I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Thank you, and I'm glad I'm speaking at the correct time now. This whole conversation is really bringing me back to a quite painful conversation that we had about Ramish Farm, which some of my colleagues may remember. Though where I've come to since having those discussions is really having a more holistic and understanding about F-35s and the flight paths themselves. And in our current housing crisis, I would like to ask, who are we to deny housing to children and families that desperately need it? I bet they'd like to be in a home than on the street. And if you don't want to put children and families here, then where? I've seen plenty of developments, affordable in some market rate, that have received extreme opposition from this council in the Ismus area. So quite frankly, it seems as though we don't want children and family to live anywhere around here. And I'll just say that affordable housing deals are extremely difficult to put together. They require numerous range of financing sources, this being one of them. And it is crucial to understand what 1.7 million dollars can mean and what it, and what the loss of that would mean to the children and families that are hoping to live in this apartment building. So while I understand the sentiment of wishing for additional engagements throughout the process and wishing for it to be a different situation, you got apples, so you deal with the apples, you know? You can't wish they were oranges. And I believe that it is an admirable effort that we are looking to do sound mitigation efforts in this project. And ultimately, denial of funds on the basis of it being in the F-35 flight path really just draws a concern to me about like if we are, if this is a policy moving forward for the council, for us to just not approve any projects that happen in that area and what it would mean to our housing crisis. And truly, I even then, even more beg to question, how are you helping us aid this crisis? And where do you want us to put this housing if not here?
Thank you, Alder. Alder Yugar?
I'll speak very briefly, but I just want to build on what President Curry said with regard to the memo from the developer. They've chosen to treat the noise study virtually as if it were a legal requirement, and I think that's quite appropriate and honorable, given the results of the noise study. And to say from my own construction experience, I'm fairly familiar with the sound mitigation process involving walls and doors and windows and other openings. And I'm quite confident that it will be successful in doing it, and I'm going to be in favor of this motion.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. Back when the F-35s were debated until 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning several years ago, I was the only Alder west of the Ismus that opposed the F-35s in that controversial vote. Subsequently, I served on President Abbas's, his president's committee on environmental justice, where we wrestled with this issue and were unable to find a legal means to prevent housing on, in this area. And that we decided that the best route we could take was trying to encourage sound mitigation. And while I share the concerns about people who are negatively impacted by the airport, the fact of the matter is that there are people who are choosing to live there now, and we can't exclude that portion of our city and say that those individuals don't have, you know, any place to be there. We will have to, I think, as a city and as a county, deal with this issue moving forward. I'm going to reluctantly support this because I don't really think we have much choice on the periphery of the 65-decibel contour. There will be opportunities to build housing, and I think it would be irresponsible for us not to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze?
I just want to echo what my colleagues have been saying. This is just like the Bimbo Bakery, how it was approved based on sound mitigation. Same thing with the Ramish Farm, when it was approved too, it was based on, you know, the great sound mitigation that was talked about. So I'm definitely going to support this, understand that there's a lot of outreach going on right now about sound mitigation with the airport. So I definitely will support this, and I have my colleagues definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to ditto and say that I am supporting this. And I'm supporting this because I'm a Mississippi girl that lived to the right of the train tracks. And to own a home, we were blessed. It wasn't the perfect location, but it was our home. And then every hour or so, the trains would come through. There are so many individuals who really would want to have a home. Often, the individuals that you're talking about, they are all relegated to areas where you don't build. There's no nemenism. The fact that you can own a home and with the inference of the noise mitigation and all those things, that's great. But the fact that an individual can really own a home is something that we cannot pass up. And so I definitely will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing, Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yes, and I hope my colleagues will support it. I think all of those comments are correct. The developer has come around. Can't say that it came just genuinely, like Bimbo Bakery went out of their way to make sure that the area sound mitigation was done. My objection, and it was the same objection under Alder Abbas, is the neighborhood, for a year, said, "We don't oppose this project. We're concerned about the streets, the sidewalks, parking." And considering that this neighborhood that I happen to live in and have happened to live in for, I'm going to say at least 10 years, maybe not, but about 10 years, it has two apartment buildings, and I know people have to have housing. Not saying that, I'm saying the way that this went down, this in-run, end-run, E-N-D-R-U-N that was done to get, that still has not addressed the streets, the sidewalks, the parking, and it, it just really is irritating the entire neighborhood about that they're not being listened to. And I have to say they're not. So I am going to ask to vote last so that we can make sure that they get the TIF money, but they should also know that maybe the developers can just, you know, consider what the neighborhood has to say about it, they're not against it, you know, maybe just consider some things. And the reason that they went and they did something about the sound mitigation is because the neighborhood complained. We don't want to just have a checkbox system where we say we notified the Alder and sent out an email and nobody in the neighborhood got it. We've got to do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Now I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak, anticipating some disagreement. We'll have a roll call vote, so all those in favor of the TIF loan, I, those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk, will please call the roll.
President Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Philadis excused. Vice President Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Yugar?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Knox is excused. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Could you come back to me, please?
Alder Madison?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Martinez Rutherford has left. Alder Miazze?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Rommel?
No.
No. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Vitavir?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Wehelier?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. And Alder Latimer-Burris?
Well, since I'm going to be 15, it's an aye.
Aye. Madam Mayor, we have 15 ayes and one no.
With 15 ayes, item 101 passes. And we will move on then to item 108, which is Legisstar 81908, amending sections of the Mass and General Ordinances related to urban design landscaping and open space to remove the minimum terraces with requirement with Urban Design District Number 8. On item 108, President Curry, a motion, please.
Moved to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just pulled this because I learned, I've learned a lot lately, Urban Design District 8 had an ordinance language about 10-foot terraces that was adopted in 2008. And just this year, I learned that pretty much we have never enforced it. And so while you could say, well, Urban Design doesn't have authority over it, the point is, we went forward thinking we were directing our staff to do a thing where we're going to, you know, install canopy trees and create a Gateway Boulevard in this really important corridor, but that never happened. So, you know, okay, that didn't happen. A lot of it was built with eight feet and less. And I pulled it off the agenda not to say, you know, I had a vote against it. I guess it's not in our purview at UDC, but I want to know what we do next because apparently the people that enforce it are traffic engineering, and it theoretically goes before Board of Public Works, but I don't know that they really actively talk about how are we planting canopy trees during their deliberations. You know, maybe they do and I've missed it. And also, it goes to Transportation Commission because they're in charge of the complete green streets. And so I want to make sure that the Alders who serve on these committees are alerted to the fact that when we go to this first-year review of the complete green streets, we really need to look at how are we ensuring that we're building, growing canopy trees in our major urban avenues like East Washington? So that was why I pulled it, just to alert you and as policymakers, and then pay attention as this goes forward in the annual, the first annual review. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. We have no other Alders in the queue. It's been moved and seconded. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Alder Rommel? We'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 108. And that brings us to the end of our agenda unless there are any additional introductions of items from the floor or announcements. Alder Govindarajan?
There's Girl Scout cookies in the back. Please take them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I think we can accommodate. Alder Evers?
Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that this is the last meeting that President Curry and Vice President Figaro Cole will be presiding over, and I think they deserve a round of applause.
Thank you both for your service, and thank you, Alder. Seeing no additional announcements, President Curry?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.